Good evening. I'd like to call the regular town council meeting of Monday, April 7th, 2025, to order. And if you can all rise, look for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Buganski. Councilor Lewis. Councilor Valboni.
President.
Councilor Carey.
Present.
Mayor Del Nicky.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea.
Present.
Councilor King.
Here.
Councilor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Councilor Pendleton.
President.
Thank you. And I have just a few remarks for upcoming events this week and next week and this coming weekend. This Wednesday, we have a ribbon-cutting grand opening, Wednesday, April 9th, at 5:00 p.m. at 41 Glendale Road. It's the former location of now furnishings and moving in is Danco Furniture. On Thursday, April 10th, the Historical Society will hold an informational meeting to discuss America 250, the 250th anniversary of the signing of Declaration of Independence. The meeting will take place from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center. On Saturday, April 12th, at 10:00 a.m., the Parks and Rec Department will hold a ribbon-cutting for the new disc golf course at Lawrence Road Park. And additionally, there's an Earth Day celebration that will take place on the same day. Saturday, April 12th, at 1:00 p.m., the library will be officially unveiled with its new name, Mary J. Etter Public Library. The event will take place outdoors in the front of the awning near the lower entrance of the building, weather permitting. Sunday, April 13th, the South Windsor Lions Club is holding their annual pancake breakfast. It is from 8:30 to noon and is being held at the South Windsor Fire Department at 1175 Ellington Road. The cost is $12 for adults and $5 for children, 10 and under. Plus, don't miss the plant and bake sale for extra treats and goodies. On Friday, April 18th, 10:00 a.m. to noon, the Parks and Rec Department will be holding their annual Easter egg hunt at South Windsor High Turf Field. And this event is now sponsored by Homestead Oil, which is formerly Imperial Oil. And just a reminder of our two public hearings tonight, 8:00 p.m. for the proposed Board of Education budget and at 8:30, public hearing for the proposed general government budget. Thank you. Moving on, item five, adoption of the agenda. Council King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion. We have a second. Any discussion, changes, moves, additions? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item six, communications from the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wasn't able to get a written report out in time for all of you, but I do have a couple verbal things to just get on the record for everybody. In terms of our tax collector's update, comparing Granite 2022 to 2023, the overall collection rate for 2022 was 99.04% at this time of the year. We are currently at 99%. So over the next couple of months, we'll be collecting hopefully a little bit more than that 0.04% to match up with previous year and probably even exceed it. Total dollar amount recovered from our tax sale that was recently held is finally in. We're at $637,028.53. And our tax collector has actually already started work on our 2026 tax sale. Wanted to make sure that the town council and residents were aware of two construction projects happening at this facility in particular. One, our roof is currently under construction and then also we're doing some renovations to the second floor. If any residents do happen to come to the facility, we do ask everybody be aware of that work that's going on and, you know, be aware in the parking lot as well as inside the building. There is a significant amount of construction happening. Lastly, I just didn't want to bring to the council's attention the sewer break that's happened in East Windsor. I know I sent all of you an email about it. Currently, they're estimating somewhere between 300,000 and 400,000 gallons per day is leaking into the Connecticut River. And they're estimating somewhere is between five and 10 days for that repair to occur. The town staff are currently watching that locally in our community. And we will make you aware of anything as it becomes aware to us. But at this point, we haven't really heard much besides deep is involved. And I'll take any questions anybody has.
Councilor Pendleton.
Thank you. Mr. Minaskalko, in the printed report of the town manager's report, there are no page numbers to lead you to it. I'm sorry, page six. Public Works Department, reconstruction of Governor's Highway Phase Two. Someone's working on a design of reconstruction of Governor's Highway. Between Talbot Lane and Ellington Road, the project will include improvements to the road geometry, new drainage pipes and structures, because it does flood over there, as well as a new road base and pavement. The proposed, they, I don't know who they are, proposed a few traffic calming measures, including a roundabout to be part of the design for the residential section of Governor's Highway. And town staff and others are reviewing these measures. I don't recall ever hearing when we talked about this, a roundabout on Governor's Highway, and I'm not sure exactly where that would be located. It's kind of concerning for me and I'm not sure how the neighbors would feel about that. It's a neighborhood road. It's not, sure, people pass through to get to Route 5, I understand that. But a roundabout, if you have a tractor trailer that decides it's going the wrong way and it's going to turn right, I'm sorry, not the wrong way, if they go to choose to turn right and go into the neighborhood area of Governor's Highway, they are going to continue down. They're not going to be able to do a roundabout to go back to say, have a sign that says, turn around, go back, you know, go back to where you came from and keep going straight to Route 5. I don't understand the purpose of a roundabout on a neighborhood road, and I'm not so sure that that's the best idea.
Correct. So they would be a consulting engineering firm that does road design and development. My understanding of where that project is in the process of getting to a final is we're still at the very early ages of design, public input, public communication. So there's a lot of resident opportunities that are still available for people to step up and say, I like a roundabout, I don't like a roundabout, I think it should be this wide, I think it should be this narrow, I think it should be at this depth or not. So there's plenty of other opportunities for residents to participate in the process.
Do you know if that, if the residents have been, one, informed of that, because I haven't heard from anybody that they've been informed, and two, if that information going out to the residents is also going out to the folks on Cody and the folks on Beldon and Hilton, since they exit that way to get to Ellington Road, to include those neighborhoods also, because they would be affected too by a roundabout, they're on that side of where Beldon is and that side of Governor's Highway as opposed to the folks near Pleasant Valley. So maybe like half of that neighborhood or something to let them know and the rest of them that live there.
Sure. I can talk to the department and make sure those neighborhoods are all notified. Typically, there's a regional area, they probably draw a circle around a certain spot and kind of notify everybody in that. So we can make sure, but I can make sure those neighborhoods are notified.
Yeah, there's 300 houses in the Pleasant Valley Estates, technically is what Hilton Drive area is called. So that would be awesome with that. And, thank you. And on that sewer break in East Windsor, do you know if deep is involved, did you say? And do you know if they're being fined?
I do know deep is involved in terms of fines for the town of East Windsor. I do not know anything about that.
Okay, so they're going 10 days with pollution to the Connecticut River and down.
We've been told it's going to take five to 10 days to complete the bypass so they can do the reconstruction.
Okay. And have we ever had a situation like that?
We have had some small instances where we've had to release wastewater into the Connecticut River due to flooding and other scenarios like that, nothing to the magnitude of what East Windsor.
Okay. And were we fined by deep?
I don't believe we were fined by deep.
Okay. But this is a situation where all these gallons of sewage.
Pretty typically, we work pretty fast to get whatever our issues are repaired.
I know that. All right. Well, thank you.
Actually, I'd like to respond to Council Pendleton regarding that roundabout. That was sort of a discussion when we had, I believe the chief was here, regarding the Oster report regarding that area. And I think the roundabout area would have been near the Talbot Lane closer, away from the residential. And I know some residents were here and they were like shaking their head.
But that's not conducive to a tractor trailer trying to do a roundabout when they're trying to get around that roundabout. They running it open.
Right, I know. But that's where it was supposed to be, down in the industrial end. Just to give you, you don't remember that one, so that's why I brought it up. So, any other questions for the town manager? Okay, moving on to item seven, public input for items on the agenda. Public input shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speakers shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who has signed up already that needs, would like to speak for any item on the agenda? For item seven, did, if you've signed up? Thank you. Who do we have? And you are? Oh, okay. Microphone, please.
I touched it. Sorry about that. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Damian Humphrey. Vivo in 6 Birch Hill Drive in South Windsor. Good evening. My name is Damian Humphrey. I live on 6 Birch Hill Drive. And I believe that for tonight's agenda, the budget for the school system, as well as our town, is going to be discussed. I've been a South Windsor resident for the last 11 years. My family and I moved here mostly because of the school system and the quality of life. We spent most of our kids' elementary school, as well as middle school, sending them to private schools because we valued great education. And when we were deciding where to move, once they hit high school, we did extensive research on where they should be educated, what kinds of services they would be getting, the level of education, diversity of teachers, thought, students. We value those things and we chose South Windsor and we're really happy with the results, the community we've built here over the last 11 years. And I wanted to share that I greatly support, my family and I, Dr. Carter's proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. Investing in education is one of the most powerful and effective ways to build strong communities and ensure long-term economic stability. Fully funding the proposed education budget is not only a commitment to our children's future, but also a strategic decision that directly benefits all of us. Whether or not we have children in the school system, mine have since graduated, gone on to college. I have one that's a junior at Central, the other one graduated from Quinnipiac University. So I still have one in college, but I don't have any high school students or kids in the current school system. One of the most tangible and widely shared benefits of strong public schools is the positive impact on property values. Research consistently shows a direct correlation between the quality of local schools and residential property values. Homes located in districts with well-funded, high-performing schools tend to have a higher market value and experience more stable appreciation over time. This is because prospective home buyers, like myself 11 years ago, often prioritize school quality when choosing where to live, creating strong demand in areas with good schools. By fully funding our education system, we are protecting and increasing the value of one of our greatest personal and community investments, our homes. Moreover, a fully funded education system fosters a more educated workforce, reduces crime rates, and encourages civic engagement, as we can see from tonight's meeting, all of which contribute to a healthier local economy and a more desirable community. When schools are underfunded, the opposite occurs. Property values stagnate or decline, local businesses struggle to attract customers, and neighborhoods experience increased turnover and instability. In short, fully funding education in South Windsor is not just an expense, it is an invaluable investment. An investment in our children, our economy, and the long-term value of our homes. Communities that prioritize education send a clear message that they value growth, opportunity, and shared success. And in these very divisive times, we need shared success. For these reasons, I strongly support the full funding of the proposed education budget as well as the town budget and urge residents and town councillors to do the same. I trust Dr. Carter and her staff. I trust town manager Michael Minaskalko and his staff. I may not always agree with some of their decisions, but I 100% trust that each decision that they make is with the best interests of the town of South Windsor and its citizens, full stop. Taxes are the shared investment made by all of us. I support their proposed budget and urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Waterhouse?
Good evening. Jessica Waterhouse, 215 Main Street. I'm here to support the Board of Education's budget. We were, I've seen that you were shocked by the increase. But if you followed the past years, Dr. Carter's budget had always said, if we keep cutting the Board of Ed budget, we're not going to have anything left. And at some point, we're going to get a number that we're not going to be happy with. And I think that's what happened now. If you keep cutting the Board of Ed budget, there's going to be nothing else to cut except programs and other educational opportunities for our children. I'm just going to strongly recommend that you support this budget and support the children of South Windsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Snyder?
Janice Snyder, 191 Bourbon Street. I'm here also, I don't think I can speak or pronounce, anything that I was going to say was said by the first speaker in a most eloquent and positive manner. I absolutely support the South Board of Education. The Board of Education, Dr. Carter and her staff have put together a budget that meets the needs of our students today. They're different than the needs of the students 10 years ago, or five years ago, or almost 15 years ago when my kids were in school. Both of my children went through South Windsor schools from kindergarten into great colleges and are now have, now have great careers. And it's because they were prepared for the next, their next chapter, because the South Windsor schools provided support for them and resources for them for the entire student, not just for taking a test, but all of the different things that kids need today to get out into the world. So I, when my kids were in school, other people were paying taxes as a community. And I want to enforce the word "community" because when you're a community, for instance, I don't use the senior center, but I love that my taxes go to support the programs at the senior center for those people. I am a senior, but I don't go there yet. But it's a great program, great. Parks and Rec, my kids went through all the programs that Parks and Rec offer. We have one of the best park and rec areas, programs anywhere. And our education in South Windsor, and I always say this without any, you know, not saying anything unpleasant, but people don't move to South Windsor for garbage pickup. They don't move to South Windsor to get their roads plowed. They move to South Windsor for the education. Look at the current real estate market. Houses aren't on the market, they're on the market for days because people want to get their families in here. And once again, the Board of Education, Kate put together, Dr. Carter put together a fantastic budget that meets everything of the services we have to deliver today. The ones that meet the needs of the students today to prepare them for the next, their next chapter, just as they did for me and my kids 15 years ago. So I would urge the Board of Education to, the Board, I would urge you to support the Board of Education budget, primarily because they worked hard to get this together. They're elected officials. People in town respect them and support them and want them to come forth with programs that meet the needs of our kids. So what I'd like to leave you with is, understand that, can they cut money from their budget? I'm sure everybody can cut money from their budget if they need to. The thing that scares me the most is the items that are going to be, that could be reduced because of a mandate by the town council to reduce that budget are things that are hidden, you know? And when I was on the board, we put together a special education budget, okay? That continually gets funded. The pensions for those that we still have pensions for. The healthcare services, you know? I remember there were times when we had some horrific healthcare costs because our employees were sick and their families needed that to be taken care of. So all of these things that on the outside may look like, oh, they can cut that because, you know, it's not really hurting any program. It is. It is hurting. And it hurts the administrative side of the Board of Education, which continues to put forth a strong, strong support for our students and our community. And remember the word "community" because if we're all together and we're all supporting each other, from schools to park and rec, to human services, to the administration, that's what a community does. They support each other. So thank you very much, and I urge you to support the Board of Education budget as presented originally by Kate Carter and then by the Board of Eds. Thank you.
Linda Jesky?
Hi, Linda Jesky, 70 Mohegan Trail. And I have to follow all those guys. So I'm not going to take long. I'm just going to say that I am here also to support the Board of Education's proposed budget increase, also support the town. Kate Carter, her staff, the Board of Education do a wonderful job. They put, you know, I knew, they do cut corners, but it's our kids. It's our future. I, I think that, you know, the cost of everything is going up. And unfortunately, in order to keep the qualified teachers supporting our educational programs and contractual obligations and just maintaining our buildings, it costs money. I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road. Little increases, okay, but what are we doing? We're putting this on the backs of our kids. Their education, it's important. I have grandchildren in the school system and I know that they use, one of them has used services here. I just don't want to see even programs cut. Like, you know, they talk about sports or they talk about arts. I have a daughter who, without the artistic program, you know, she's pursued that. So I just want to say that with our fast-growing school system, I think we need to support our Board of Education and our town budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Doherty?
Good evening. Kathy Doherty, 60 Madison Way. So just before, just my back is to everybody, be careful because I'm going on the other side of this. I have always been an advocate of education and I value education because it is the stepping stone of where our children, grandchildren go next. And last year, I came and spoke to the need of fully funding the education budget because we were considered the outlier of Connecticut with an enrollment growth in the double digits. And I also believe that we live in a very financially diverse community. Some people are lucky enough to not even bat an eye at the huge tax increases that we have seen in the past years, while others live on a more modest or fixed income. So today, I'm here to speak against fully funding the board's budget, however, funding it at a modest level. The state, in its infinite wisdom, passed legislation that education budgets in towns can never be decreased. So what does that mean? Whatever is approved this year is the starting point for next year, despite enrollment. Since fiscal 2021, the education budget has seen an increase of 33%. It has gone from approved budget of roughly 75 million to the request tonight of slightly over 100 million. This is just not sustainable. But I also do not believe that I can stand here and say, cut the budget, without looking into and determining the wheres and the hows and the effect. I think we need to start looking and thinking outside the box, not to eliminate programs, but to deliver them in a different way. Schools have an amazing ability to quantitatively look at data to understand the success of certain programs. So I'm urging the board to look at some of these programs, and I'm going to start with one, foreign language. I am an advocate of foreign language in the elementary schools. The earlier you teach, the easier it is for them to comprehend. However, there is no data to support what the children are learning now and how it affects their future. First, the children received in First, the children receive instructions of 30 minutes per week, but only when the instruction is available, because sometimes they're not available—from first grade through fifth grade. There is no grade on a report card to tell you what they've learned or how they're doing, yet there is for gym, art, and music. And there is no data to suggest how effective this program is or not, or any that I could find. So what are the benchmarks? What are they required to know before they attend sixth grade? So in sixth grade, this is their first real real year of learning. But where do they begin with instruction? Would it be considered a second-year student in foreign language, or is it back to the beginning? With all of the mandates by the state, although this foreign language in elementary school is not one, I am sure that teachers would love to have that 30 minutes back a week to focus on writing, reading, and math intervention. Seventh and eighth grade students are also given a choice, French or Spanish. How many people take French? Is it worth offering in middle school? Can we wait to high school and put foreign language—in put French in the foreign language lab, as we do for many other languages? Thinking outside the box does not mean not to do it. It means find another way. For instance, many parents are looking for after-school activities for their kids. We have highly educated, highly wonderful high school students that are excelling in foreign languages, such as Spanish, that I would bet would be looking for enrichment after school and an ability to enrich elementary school kids. It could be a pay-as-you-go, similar to what they do with the Park and Rec program. I urge the board to also look at stipends. Our town thrives on volunteers, coaches, et cetera. All of them are background-checked. Is there a way that we could possibly reduce the stipends that we pay and do it with volunteers while having a certified teacher or certified staff be overseeing everything? An over $6 million increase year to year is a 33% increase since 2021. To me, it's not sustainable. I would recommend that this council give the board what may be considered a modest increase of $4.5 million, which to me really isn't modest. It is significant, because it will still result in a 31% increase in education from the '21 budget to present. But it would also give the taxpayers an opportunity to play catch-up in this very scary financial future that we face. Thank you.[766.75][766.75](APPLAUSE).
Paul Bernstein?
Paul Bernstein, 191 Newbury Road. I also want to speak to the Board of Ed budget. So I viewed the video of the Board of Ed meeting with the town council held March 24th at TE, and I have some perspective I'd like to share. First of all, I hope we all appreciate the extraordinary leader we have in our superintendent of schools. I don't know how many of you have experience with other districts, but not everyone has a Dr. Carter. As an example, in Norwich, the superintendent of schools was forced to resign recently amid allegations of corruption. My wife was a district-wide teacher there for 11 years, and the working conditions were nightmarish by her account. In terms of how this relates to the budget, I pay over $13,000 in property taxes. According to last year's budget, operating budget, about 60% of the revenues go to the Board of Education. So for me, that's about $7,800 of my tax liability. And what I'm here to say is that I trust Dr. Carter unconditionally to spend every nickel of that as she sees fit. I consider her the gold standard of school leaders. Thank you.[855.29][855.29](APPLAUSE).
Daria Plummer?
This is dangerous, right? And I am so short, so I'm going to speak up. Daria Plummer, 235 Orchard Hill Drive. Good evening, Mayor Del Nicky, Deputy Mayor Syracuse, and members of the town council. And for the record, I am here to speak for the Board of Ed budget and to support it in its entirety. I have to say, I think Mrs. Doherty presented some very interesting facts, and I would say that they are most appropriate to be brought to the Board of Education for discussion, not for this year's budget, but for future year's budget, because this train is rolling and is on the ground and ready to depart. So I honestly believe that she had some very valued and valuable information that I think that could clearly go to the Board of Ed. But for the record, I am also here to thank you. I'm not here to pander to you, because you have worked hard, each and every one of you, doing your due diligence to understand the government and the education budgets. And you have sacrificed much more time and have done much more than that on all the budget discussions. Now, what you do here is precisely that of what a volunteer does. It's very hard work. However, being in an elected office is just the beginning of the journey, as I'm sure you have found out. It's not the end. And running for office is far more than any slogan or catchphrase, because being in office means being in a position of leadership and assuming the responsibility of a leader. I wish to thank Councilwoman Kerry in particular for the statistics that she shared on March 24th at the joint meeting that you had with the Board of Ed. I had to Google niche rankings. Both the niche rankings and the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings are comparable. They take into account academic rigor of a community, teacher salaries and their absenteeism, student-teacher ratio, rankings based upon teacher academics and data, and ratings of both parents and students, as well as the district's offerings for clubs and activities, college and AP classes, and student diversity. We rank in the top half proudly nationwide, top sixth in Connecticut, and top fifth in our county. I am not sure that these statistics put us in an A-plus echelon yet, but we clearly are above average in our rankings, and I for one want us to stay above average. The number-one reason people move to South Windsor, as you've already heard and attested to this evening, is for the school system. And the number-one reason people my age can sell their houses is the school system. If the Board of Education is forced to eliminate any programs that they have sought and that we have sought and fought for so hard with the proposed $1.3 million budget cut, what good are we? No one wants to pay more taxes. I don't want to pay more taxes. Yet the taxes in South Windsor make our community—and I've heard that word spoken again and again tonight—have made our community excellent, safe, and appealing. And that's where we live. What we get from our taxes here is outstanding, government side, Board of Education side, outstanding. And that is due to the management of every department, every department, including our school system. But South Windsor cannot sustain education cuts and still be in the top half, the sixth, or the fifth rankings, nor can we wait, as was mentioned, until 2031, when things may even out. That can can be kicked down the road, but it gets dusty, dented, rusty, it crumbles, and the darn thing falls apart. Leadership does not let any pieces under it fall apart. You have the responsibility of this town in your hands, and I am asking you to be courageous this evening, and when the time comes, and to grant the Board of Ed and the town—and the town—the entirety of its budget request. This is one incredibly fine community. At my age, I'm still here because of this community. So thank you very much.[1175.66][1175.66](APPLAUSE).
If we don't extend for public input on item seven, anyone else would like to come forward? It's about the Board of Ed budget. We got the—
Is it on the list? People on the list, or just?
No, the list is—that—I read what was on the list.
It was the seventh list for the Board of Ed stuff.
This is public input for item seven. We haven't gotten to the public hearing yet. So you want to speak right now?
Sure.
Okay. And your name, when you get up there?
It's Matthew Epler. I hope you didn't lower this too much for me.[1219.22][1219.22](LAUGHTER). It's Matthew Epler, 309 Sandstone Drive.
Can you spell your last name?
E.P.P.L.E.R.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council and fellow residents. My name is Matthew Epler, and I stand before you tonight as a proud resident of this town, a dedicated high school teacher, the president of our teachers' union, and perhaps, most importantly, a parent whose own children went through this very school system. This issue is deeply personal to me, as well as the more than 450 educators I represent, many who are here tonight. We have seen firsthand the incredible impact of well-funded schools have on our students. I've watched my very own children grow and thrive here, thanks to passionate teachers, strong academic programs, and the kind of support every child deserves. But I fear that with the proposed budget cuts, future students, our children and grandchildren, won't have the same opportunities. Let's be clear: cutting school funding isn't just about balancing a budget. It's about taking resources away from our children—larger class sizes, outdated books, fewer support services. These aren't just inconveniences; these are barriers to learning, and our students deserve better. Our teachers, your neighbors, are already stretched thin, working long hours, spending their own money on supplies, and doing everything they can to give each child the attention they deserve. Further cuts will drive even more talented educators away, forcing them to seek fair pay and support elsewhere. And when our teachers leave, our students lose. But also be honest about the cuts really mean. They don't solve the financial problem; they just push it down the road. Year after year, we'll be forced to make up these shortfalls, and eventually, the choices will become even more painful. These cuts put us on a path toward eliminating beloved programs—the arts, music, athletics, and advanced coursework—the very things that make a school system excellent and a community proud. I urge you to reconsider these cuts. Investing in education is investing in the future of this town. Strong schools mean higher property values, a more skilled workforce, and a stronger, more united community. We cannot afford to short-change our children. Please make the right choice, stand with your teachers, your students, and your families. Thank you.[1357.25][1357.25](APPLAUSE).
We've hit our 30-minute limit. Is there someone like to make a motion to extend public input?
Absolutely. I make a motion to extend public input.
Or how long, or till everybody's spoke for number seven?
Yes, till everyone has been heard, yes.
Do I hear a second?
A lot of this stuff would happen in our— Our public hearing would cover a lot of this stuff. So are we going to have public hearing now, or?
This is public input, and they can talk on public input on the same item that's on for the public hearing.
Anything on the agenda?
Anything that's on the agenda. So public—the public hearing is on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
After the vote, I have a question, please.
And discussion, yes.
No, after. It's a separate—it's a separate question.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I just have a question of clarification, if that's okay, for Mr. Epler.
Sure. Go ahead.
Mr. Epler, are you the president of the South Windsor Teachers' Union?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. It just wasn't—I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Anyone else would like to come forward at this time?
Hi.
And if you can say your name, so I can write it down nicely.
Absolutely. My name is Juliana Lyons. I live at 48 Perrin Lane.
Wait a minute, Julie?
Juliana.
Okay.
Lyons, L.Y.O.N.S.
Thank you.
Yep. Good evening, town council members and South Windsor residents. My name is Juliana Lyons, and I stand before you tonight feeling both incredibly blessed, yet wildly disheartened. I have been very fortunate to have the opportunity to live in South Windsor my entire life. I am a product of the South Windsor school system, and I have the privilege to teach in the town that built me. I bought my first home on Sunfield Drive, and this past summer, my husband and I bought a beautiful home on Perrin Lane. And while South Windsor is an absolutely gorgeous town full of diversity, well-kept facilities, and activities for families, there is only one reason why my husband and I felt it 100% necessary that we remain here, and that reason is the exceptional education system. After watching the last meeting, I heard many members of the council identify themselves as numbers people. So I spoke to the real estate agent that helped me to secure our home in the hopes of gathering some numbers that reflect the current housing market in South Windsor. He reported—I was shocked, right? He reported that the vast majority of houses in South Windsor do not spend more than seven days on the market. Our town is such a sought-after place to live that houses are selling within one week. Even more impressive is the amount that houses are selling for. He reported that the majority of houses in South Windsor are selling for 10% to 15% over asking price. The open houses that he hosts have at least 15 families attend, and from personal experience, the three open houses that I attended in South Windsor had almost 80 attendees each. So I asked him for the bottom line, once baking South Windsor such a desirable place to live. And he stated with confidence that the majority of families that are looking to live in South Windsor want two things: a safe community with an exceptional school system. And that is exactly what we are. I watched the joint council meeting with an incredibly heavy heart. As someone who spent tens of thousands of dollars over asking price on a house to live in this town, to send my daughter to the outstanding school system that South Windsor provides, I was deeply concerned to hear that the budget that has already been chopped significantly faces further cuts. Furthermore, I like to voice my concern for people like my in-laws, seniors that live in South Windsor that will be looking to sell their home over the next five years. I only hope that they, among many other retirees living here, will be able to sell their homes in a strong market. But if budget cuts impact the school system negatively, who knows if there will be young couples like my husband and myself eager to move in. South Windsor hangs its hat on education, and as an educator in this district, I know that firsthand. Each and every day, I have the unique privilege of seeing the children in this town thrive. And it's because of the countless opportunities and supports that this district provides. From the arts to athletics to counseling programs, STEM opportunities, international celebrations, and specialized supports, every child in South Windsor has the chance to see success, happiness, and acceptance. I urge you to consider these children when making your final decision about the budget. My two-year-old daughter Mia will one day board the bus to attend kindergarten at Philip R. Smith, and as a mother, it is my duty to ensure that she has the same chance to grow and thrive as I did, growing up in this extraordinary town. Please stand with me. Please stand with all of the members of this community that will stop at nothing to ensure that the integrity of this school system is not compromised. Please support the fiscally responsible budget outlined by Dr. Carter, and know that your decision will make an impact on all of the remarkable children in this town. Let it be a positive one. My sincerest thanks and all of my appreciation for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up at this time?
My name is Ray Pollan. I live at 25 Mohegan Trail in South Windsor. I'm here to talk about the Board of Ed budget. I'll begin with a tale of two neighbors in towns. When the state recently increased educational funding to municipalities, the Manchester Board of Ed reduced its budget ask from a 4.5% increase to just over 2%. Not the South Windsor Board of Ed, which kept its budget ask at 6% increase. Should you approve this, that would mean the school budget would increase 25% over the last three years—last year, the current year, and the upcoming year, while student enrollment has increased 8%. So three times the enrollment increase. With the school budget being almost two-thirds of the total budget, an increase of 6% just by itself, before the additions of town operations, debt, and capital, and the subtract—and the subtraction of the grand list, if any, would increase South Windsor property taxes by almost 4%. This in a year when cost of living escalator in resident paychecks, if they're lucky, will only be 2.5% to 3%. Seniors are receiving a 2.5% increase in their social security checks. So the school budget is the elephant in the room. You know, in your household, when you start having trouble making— You know, in your household, when you start having trouble making ends meet, a reasonable thing to do is to ask, "What changed?" So you go back to a year when there was not an issue. Same for the school budget. And I suggest that a good look back year might be 2019, 2020. That is the $75 million fiscal year '20 budget. In addition to making ends meet, fiscal year '20 is a good benchmark because it was the year before the school superintendent had $10 million in temporary COVID-related funds to supplement her appropriations. Another advantage of comparing fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '20 is that these are all actual budget numbers: no estimates, no projections. Also, over the five-year period, South Windsor High School SAT scores have been flat, hovering 15 to 20 points above or below 1,100 out of 1,600, currently below, and at the low end of our reference group. There's been no bang for the buck. What's needed is an audit for the school budget, but that is costly. However, given comparable information, you can quickly do an internal audit. Here's what I suggest. You request a printout of the line item fiscal year '25 authorized budget, side by side with the line item fiscal year '20 budget. Not to set the budget line items, but to give you a sense of how much bloat is in the current budget. Once in hand, you can quickly browse the many pages, looking primarily for two things. First, line items in the current budget that were not in the fiscal year '20 budget. Those may have been funded by the temporary $10 million COVID-related funds, which were supposed to be for temporary projects and should no longer be in the budget. Second, browse for line items in both budgets that have had the greatest increases. This should provide you with the background to ask specific questions rather than settling for generic answers. And should the superintendent respond to a reduced allowance by eliminating middle school and freshman sports, well, those were the same sports in the fiscal year '20, and you were able to support them with $75 million, but now you can't with $95 to $100 million? Surely, that's not the problem. Should you choose not to do this, well, we'll know what you're really all about, and we'll take that with us to the polls in November. That South Windsor charter that's been wasting our time of late provides for both a town council and a Board of Education, not two Boards of Education. And to Mr. Balboni, I urge you to read the Connecticut Minimum Budget Requirement Legislation. You'll find that no-cut budget legislation that Mrs. Doherty referred to allows exemptions. And South Windsor, with its recent spending over minimum, might just qualify. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to come forward? Mr. Paterno?
Thank you. Andrew Paterno, 301 Strawberry Lane, South Windsor. Mayor Del Nicky and all town council members, Superintendent Carter, Board of Education Chair Esman, thanks for this opportunity to speak tonight. I plan to support the Board of Education budget, but I want to start by making one statement. When I first moved to South Windsor, and that was 50 years ago, that's 5-0, I wasn't making much money. And the people in this town, through their tax dollars, helped to support me and my kids in their public education in South Windsor. And I plan, I have a fake ID, I'm not really a senior, but I plan, now that I'm a senior, to keep paying my taxes to support the young families who are moving into this town. It's called payback. Somebody did it for me, I want to return the favor. And it's important to understand that in the four school referendums, the senior center, the senior advisory council, the senior citizens in this town supported those referendum every single time. Now, if you're concerned, I heard at the Joint Board of Education Town Council meeting that you are concerned about, there are some seniors who are on very low fixed incomes. Well, a couple of years ago, the previous town council passed what's called a local option for tax abatement for seniors. It's at $195 right now. You have to have lived in South Windsor for X number of years, you have to have certain income limits. So a high earner is not going to get this benefit. But you can give a tax abatement. You could change that $195 to $395 and give those folks in town who maybe can't afford paying a slight tax increase, give them a tax abatement. We do it for businesses. Let's do it for seniors. If that's your concern, there's a way for you to do this. Now, I have watched this community grow. I've watched this community make a commitment to our school system. And I watched as South Windsor became town in the state of Connecticut with the largest student enrollment increase. It's pushing 16%. Let me say that again: in the state of Connecticut, we have the largest student enrollment increase. These are not made-up numbers. People want to live here for a reason. At the same time that we see growth, we see it's evident that our school administration, our Board of Education, and our teaching staff have proven time and time again to be good stewards of the educational programs for our students. We have seen reasonable budgets and outreach to bring diversity to our school staff, and yes, diversity is good. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is a good thing. And that is coupled with the fact that we have a growing diversity right within our town, our population. How can we ignore that? But our school system is aware of it, and they're working at it. Meanwhile, we're spending the least amount of money per student in all the comparable school districts in our reference group. If you look at all the charts, we spend the lowest amount of money per student. But don't let the numbers fool you. The dollars are spent wisely because we are getting quality education programs for our students based on good fiscal responsibility and planning by our Board and by our superintendent and her administrative staff. Efficient planning and innovation has been a hallmark of this Board and of the superintendent. They should be applauded for these amazing efforts, and they do it consistently. I get angry every year. This darn microphone, I'm sorry. I get angry every year when I see on Channel 30 around August, you all know this advertisement, "Please send in money to help teachers pay for supplies for their classrooms." That is pathetic. We've got to give donations because teachers are taking money out of their own pockets? It's not what we want in South Windsor. So don't be penny wise and pound foolish. We should be investing in education, investing in our schools, investing in our children, investing in the future. I thank you, and I support the Board of Education budget.
We have approximately four minutes left, so we have to interrupt a speaker for the 8 o'clock public hearing. So you either can wait until 8 o'clock, or you've got less than four minutes.
All right, sir. Sold. My name is Krista Michalak, 56 Partridge Lane. I want to first thank all of you for being here.
Can you quickly, your last name?
M.I.C.H.A.L.A.K. I just wanted to thank you all for being here and starting to move forward in some of the impossible decisions that we have to make. I wanted to start with Mr. Balboni, and in regards to his March 24 comments about where are all these immigrants coming from. Your constituents are a diverse pool of families representing dozens of countries in South Windsor. They speak their country's native language. Our nation, the United States of America, by 2035 will be the largest Spanish-speaking population in the world. That's a big deal. Texas used to be Mexico. They speak Spanish there. Puerto Rico's part of America. They speak Spanish. Spanish is a language that is going to be spoken in the state of Connecticut and in our classrooms. If you simply say hello to your neighbors and get to know them, you would have seen that. They're in our town, they're in our schools, and our children, our native-born students, benefit from the diversity that brings to our South Windsor schools. I want to continue to address the rest of the Board about my family's experience at the PRS district. From the moment they get on the bus and throughout the day, there are many strategically utilized adults they interact with, from school social worker Mr. Walton, to special ed teachers, pairs, custodians, Mr. Carl, and SRO officer, Mr. Scott. My daughter has Mrs. Long, who's in first grade, and she's the embodiment of Ms. Frizzle. My son has Miss Nigum in fourth, and both teachers turn a normal classroom setting into a fun and engaging environment where all their students are seen, heard, loved, and get what they need to be successful. Both teachers push their students to use critical thinking skills and teach them to love their smart brain. If you know, you know. My daughter has 22 classmates and my son 23. If we shrink this budget, those class sizes are going to balloon to 26 to 28 kids. How are those teachers going to make those connections with their students? I would be remiss not to also mention Arnica Sullivan, who leads our science department. And this is just one example of a teacher doing, an administrator doing all she can to help our students, on the bare minimum, go above and beyond. She organized the statewide science fair in which two of our students from PRS alone made it to the state finals. The chances of that happening are less than 1%, less than the chances of getting into Harvard. One of those students, shameless plug, my son, went on to MIT to represent his invention on a national level. That's incredible, right from our town in South Windsor. And Arnica spends her time not buying the fancy science kits, but going and sourcing cheap materials in order to bring these experiments to our students. The creativity that you can see in the state science fair or even just in our STEM classrooms is incredible. Children are curious. Raise your hand if you have a child. They turn a shoebox into a new, you know, new invention. They're curious. They want to learn more. I know you have children as well. They're young. They're the same age as mine. So imagine this teacher gets cut. These class sizes are huge. Or maybe our funding gets cut, right, and we don't have the materials. Where do our science experiments go? Through no fault of their own, the students are only getting half or a third of the experience of what they could have, for 6%. Half is lost for 6%. I hear the concern about driving people out with high costs, but consider why people fight over a house, as the other speaker mentioned. $10,000, $20,000, $80,000 over asking price. You all get the flyers in your mail. Nerik did it. He's got the knack. Okay? So no one's going to lose out on their property taxes. We're going to attract those families, and why do they come? They come for our schools. So I want to thank our teachers, our administrators, Dr. Carter. I fully support the budget, and again, I hope that you consider adopting their budget.
Thank you. Okay. Well, at this time, we are now going to suspend the regular town council meeting for our public hearing. The public hearing is to receive citizen input on the proposed Board of Education budget for fiscal year '25, '26. Ms. Senners, if you could please read the public notice.
To be published in the Journal Inquirer, March 21, 2025, Legal Ad Town of South Windsor. Notice is hereby given that the South Windsor Town Council has set Monday, April 7, 2025, at 8:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Ave, South Windsor, Connecticut, as the time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the proposed Board of Education budget for fiscal year '25, '26, dated at South Windsor, Connecticut, this 18th day of March, 2025, attested to by Catherine Senners, Executive Assistant.
Thank you. Do we have the sign-up sheet for the Board of Ed book hearing? If there's anyone that would like a seat, there's two seats in front here. Okay. Okay, we have Beth Esman?
Good evening, Mayor Del Nicky and town councilors. I'm Beth Esman, 3 Church Way. I am the Chair of the Board of Education, but more importantly... Terrified. I'm Beth Esman, 3 Church Way. I am the Chair of the Board of Education, but more importantly, I am a parent of four children: two South Windsor graduates who are now in college and two children still in our South Windsor schools. We are a unique town. Our education stands out, and it's often the reason people move to South Windsor and want to raise their families here. This reputation has contributed to our town having the fastest-growing school district in the state. With rising enrollment comes rising costs. Our superintendent of schools and our Board have worked hard and creatively to minimize those costs. South Windsor spends less per pupil than any other town in our DURG. Additionally, our current proposed budget percent increase of 5.9% is in line with other schools in our DURG despite their declining enrollment. Although none of us want a tax increase, we have to respond to the increased enrollment. That is not a choice or a luxury. It is a requirement. We have to do the minimum to educate the kids moving into town, and that is what this budget increase does. This budget does not include new programs or initiatives to move our district forward or keep it competitive with the other towns in our DURG, many of which have similar proposed budget increases without our enrollment. Those towns are investing in their education, in their children, and in their future, while we just try to keep pace with our student population. A cut to this proposed budget increase just defers the costs required to keep up with our students. It puts our students and families at a disadvantage because not only are we not staying competitive, but we are not even funding the minimum enrollment costs. This is not a one-time, one-year emergency that we just have to get through. Our enrollment is projected to continue to grow until 2033. Ongoing cuts to the Board of Ed budget year after year as our enrollment rises is not sustainable or fiscally responsible, and it will lead to even more drastic tax spikes when we have to make up for what was deferred today. It will also lead to a decline in the quality of education if we continue to defer investing in our district. We are a community that values education. The caliber of education should not be compromised because of enrollment or because some don't want to continue to invest in what is arguably our best asset. The only thing worse than paying the high taxes we pay would be to pay those taxes to have a school district that is no longer desirable and houses we cannot sell as a result. I hope you all reflect our community's commitment to education and fully fund the Board of Ed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Burnham?
Good evening. My name is Paul Burnham. I live at 25 Pear Tree Lane. I like to say that like that because everybody thinks I live on Peachtree Lane. So just coming tonight just to talk a little bit about, you know, one thing that I bring up first is the town grand list grew by 14%. Our grand li... that's not much. So there's not a lot of money coming into South Windsor, you know? And, you know, next, in 2025, you're going to see our grand list grow up because we've got a lot of stuff going on in this town that's going to help to grow the grand list. I mean, there is, right now, there's two buildings that have been built on Buckland Road with one that's under construction. There's a building on, there's another building in town that's been built, 9,000 square feet. Another building that's 5,000 square feet in process. Another 30,200-square-foot building in process, you know? And there's also been approved for a 30,000-square-foot building in town. So, you know, and there's more, there's... So, you know, and there's more, there's a lot of building going on in South Windsor. There's, you know, that's going to help to build up our grand list so we have money to spend. And I just hope that we can just kind of, I hear the thing over and over, watching things on TV about kicking the can down the road. I get it, I do. But we just got to get some projects going in town, let's get some money coming into town, and hopefully that money can help offset some of these increases. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. John Sandberg? You're eating into your time, Mr. Sandberg.
There's a John Mayer song, oh, I'm sorry, John Sandberg, 139 Lawrence Road, South Windsor. There's a John Mayer song, it's "Waiting for the World to Change," and there's a line in the song that says, "When they own the information, they can bend it all they want." I did some research. If you happen to have a copy of the graph I just showed you, this is, you can get this right from the Board of Education's website in their Budget Department. You have to search over to the enrollment increase and then go to a different place to get the budgets. I'm just going to go over the numbers, because 2018 to 2021, we had a 400-student enrollment increase. The budget over that time period went up $3.4 million, approximately $800,000 per 100 students. Then COVID came along, 2021 through '24, and I'm going to actually include this last year's also, because there was roughly another 100, just over 100 students in that too. So from '21 to this current year, there's been a 500-student enrollment increase. The budget rose almost $18 million. That raised it from $800 per 100 students to 3.8 million per 100 students. I know there's mandates, and, excuse me, I want to go, I'll get back to that in a minute. The only way to fix an issue is to recognize we have one, and we can all agree that this town is in crisis right now. Our finances, we're strapped. We ran on trying to cut the budget coming into office, and when we got here, we found out that we couldn't cut the budget for a few years to come. It's going to be 4% per year. This isn't a red or a blue issue. I'm looking for both sides of the aisle to come together, and a starting point, we have to have some solutions. All I can do is throw some suggestions. I'm not sure who's going to be able to do this stuff, but we can push back on mandates. We can try to slow the student enrollment. I know that student enrollment is being kind of pushed down our, into our school system. I don't know who's in charge and who can try to slow that down some. I have to thank all the committee members, because the committee members up in front of us are all volunteers. Everybody volunteers. We meet for four hours at certain meetings to try to curtail some of the stuff that's going on in town. We really don't have a lot of time. The budgets are put together by employers who work 40-hour weeks, and our taxes pay them to put these presentations together, and they're supposed to make sense. The numbers just don't make sense right now. They're way out of line. My suggestion is that we freeze the budgets, we freeze the budgets at least for one year. I've talked to people from four other towns involved with the Board of Education, and one of our neighboring towns actually had a wage freeze for two years because the budget was so stressed that, and the teachers cared about the students and the families, and they did just that, they froze it. I also think that maybe Dr. Carter could go back to the union labors and make some concessions with the union labor contracts for the teachers' wages and their packages. In closing, all I can say is that there's no wrong time to do the right thing, and right now, we have to reel it back in before we can move forward. Thank you.
Phil Kibowski?
Phil Kibowski, 1909 Main Street. First of all, I'd like to thank Daria Plummer for not speaking, she was signed up before me, and I never want to follow Daria, no matter what she does. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed Board of Ed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I've worked on nine different budgets for the town, six of them while on the Board of Ed, and three while on the Town Council. All of the Board of Ed budget requests that I've seen during these nine years have been built with providing our students with the administration felt was needed to provide the best education possible. The current budget looks to stay that same course. It provides for the growing needs of our student population without packing it with those items that the administration and teachers might feel would be nice to have. However, I understand there's thought to cut approximately $1.3 million from the current proposed budget at a time when the student population continues to grow at a rate unmatched within the state of Connecticut. To make that sort of cut could impact the Board for the next few years as it continues to handle our growing population, as they age out of the elementary schools and into the middle and high school. Those students currently in elementary will move up and begin to look for the various programs, both academics and athletics, and if these cuts continue to hinder the budget of the Board, we will not be able to provide the programs that they are looking for. A writer once stated that "The code of our humanity is faithful service to that unwritten commandment that says, 'We shall give our children better than we ourselves receive.'" And I thought Juliana Lyons' comments pretty much touched on that. By reducing the proposed budget, we would be giving our students a little less than their predecessors, and I am hoping that you will reconsider doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Oliver Basal. Yeah, Oliver.
Hi. My name is Oliver.
Yeah, it's a little...
My name is Oliver Hia Bensel from 115 Valley View Drive, and I'm also in support of the budget, and I don't really want to reiterate a lot of what the people in front of me have said, because they have said everything over and over and over, because they're right. I mean, I even agree that there is no better time to do the right thing, because that right thing is to pass that proposal. We need to fund the future for our children. And when I was hearing the first speaker earlier, I fully agreed with you, but I differed about one thing. You said property values or home values were the most important.
Actually, if you can say four words so the mic can pick you up.
Property values or house values were the most important thing. At that moment, I thought, I don't completely agree. I think that's the second important thing. I think our children are the most important thing as an investment in our future. And as one of the other people here said earlier, that we need to think out of the box. Out of the box thinking means that we're going to put more work on people, we're going to put more work on teachers for the same pay. And that's not fair, that's not right, because they're struggling in the same way that everybody else does with rising cost. And to just say, okay, we're going to have them work more, that's not good. So I urge you to say yes to this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, I have four others that already spoke during public input. I'm assuming you're okay. Okay. Any others that would like to speak during the public hearing?
Good evening. My name's Dalton Hawie, H-A-W-I-E. Everyone says HO, so don't do that, please.
What was your first name again?
Dalton, D-A-L-T-U-N. Live on 400 Andrews Way.
Thank you.
Many of the previous speakers, who are also in support of Dr. Carter's and the Board's budgets, have spoken earlier about the importance of keeping property values high and the investments in their children. I'm a member of Gen Z, so homeownership is a tenuous dream at best, and I don't have any children yet, thankfully. But I am, but I am a new educator, and when I was, when I first graduated from UConn, national champions, I applied, thank you. I had the opportunity to apply to dozens of schools and dozens of districts across the states, and I was even offered the opportunity to interview at many of them, and I was offered jobs at them. These are schools in Fairfield County, Wyndham County, all over the states, private schools, public schools, schools with enrollments that range in the $60,000 range per students to public high schools in Hartford. And I had to make a very big decision about where I was going to take my first big-boy job. And after meeting with the principal at South Windsor High School and a couple of the teachers there, and meeting Dr. Sanzo, I knew I had to start apartment shopping for places in South Windsor, because there was just an energy here, and that energy really does come from the top down. Teachers are supported in this district, and they feel extraordinarily lucky to be here. You can ask any of them, they tell me all the time, they say, Dalton, you found the golden, like, the golden job on your first try. Like, you found a place that teachers from other districts want to come here to teach in these schools, because we are supported by the budget and we are allowed, not just those basic classroom resources that we do need, but also the ability to invest in some of the extracurricular programs as well, that make our school the envy of the state. I live in an apartment complex, I can tell you that a lot of my neighbors are young families who are moving here precisely for the schools. I see their middle school, elementary school kids running around all the time. Someday, I will have to make the decision about where I want to settle down, buy a house, start a family. I hope it gets to be here, but that's only really a reality, and it's only worth my investments if we're going to continue to invest in that future, just from a younger person's perspective. I'd like to share a couple of quick anecdotes with you, just about some of the programs at the high school, two in particular. My first year at the high school, I was approached by a few students to be the mock trial advisor, and I later found out they always ask the new teachers this, because they know we have the time. So I was like eager, I'm like, yeah, sure, you guys like believe in me? That's awesome, I really believe in myself. So I agreed, and I had the opportunity to serve as the mock trial advisor, and this is a program where students, these are high school kids, are litigating actual cases in front of actual judges in actual courtrooms across the states. And that first year, and I won't take the credit for this, it's all on them, because they truly do all the work, they accomplished something that we have, to my knowledge, never done before we made it to the elite eight of the state competition of 50 schools, and we beat schools we'd never beaten before. And that's only possible because not only are the teachers supported by Dr. Carter's leadership and the budget, but the students are also supported because they're able to join that program, and it's not a cost to them. Whatever their needs are to enter that program are met. And one more, Science Olympiad is truly probably the coolest club I've ever experienced. I'm not even a science teacher, but I have to admit, this is the coolest thing ever. I had the opportunity to travel with them to Michigan at the national competition last year, and that does mean that South Windsor represents our state on a national level and really puts us on the map there. And I saw students building airplanes, solar panels, robots, coding. I saw them identify plants by like leaf type. I heard about carbon-dating dinosaur bones. I heard about the coolest educational experiences you can possibly imagine, and all those things are only possible because we make a meaningful investment in the future. So take it from someone who might dare to represent the next generation of citizens, this is an investment that's necessary for me to grow my roots here. So I strongly urge you to pass the budgets and continue investing in our schools. Thank you.
Dan Edwards?
Hello? Hi, Dan Edwards, 131 Hilton Drive. Thank you to the Town Council and Board of Education members here on the dais, or out in the audience as well, for your service. I'm here today to speak about the Board of Education budget, and to be clear, I don't think there's anyone in this town who disputes the quality of education here. I do applaud the council for taking and asking the tough questions, though, things that, for several years, have not really been looked into. Yes, there are many unfunded mandates, both at the Board of Ed and town level, and shame of those, shame to some of those in town, critical of a councillor who recently brought this up. We need our elected officials, as well as our town manager and superintendent, to make it a priority to seek all available means to fight unfunded mandates and to make sure that this isn't a tax or a burden on our citizens. Lastly, we can't keep kicking down the can down the road, as many of the speakers have said tonight. At the same time, as Kathy Doherty stated, we need to make sure we do it wisely and not arbitrarily. What does that mean? Maybe yes. Many of you have asked up on the dais and in the audience have asked the critical questions. Are there ways to, things that we can do better? Why is this room packed? Transparency. People have read posts come to the meeting tonight. Some people have looked at the Board of Ed budgets, some people have listened to presentations at the prior Town Council meetings. But one area where I think we could improve is technology. 60% of the districts in our DRGB have a more transparent Board of Education website, and employ ways to make residents more aware of what is going on at the Board of Education level, whether it be YouTube streams of meetings, or just simply the word "budget" on their main page. 60% of the schools in our district have a better technology platform. And if I'm looking at the, if I remember the number correctly, I think 20%, there's like a 27% technology increase to this year's budget. And yes, I think some of it was due to new technology engagements, maybe new like assessment platforms, but I think there's also a question to be raised is, do we need a particular assessment test, or is that something that the teachers themselves can be doing as well as some of the other districts, schools in their other DRGB do? Anyway, thank you again for your time and all your efforts.
We have five minutes to our next public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward regarding the Board of Ed? Ms. Copper?
My name is Lisa Copper. I live at 1 Autumn Drive in South Windsor. I have lived in town for almost 50 years. When we moved here, the schools were, the school population was declining. I've watched the population go up and down and up and down. I've watched it when we had to add portables and when teachers or social service workers and people who were doing special activities were meeting in former broom closets. So I've seen things when things were rough and things were better. But what I've also seen is how the school system has improved. I think my children got a good education, but the offerings that they have now and the stimulation that the children receive now is infinitely better than when my children were in school. Basically, I'm here to support the school budget as it is, because it's a basic budget. We are covering costs. The school population has increased, and therefore the costs have increased, and I think that we need to maintain... And I think that we need to maintain the wonderful standards we have and the outstanding education that we provide our students. I realize that this means a tax increase, and I, of course, will support it, just as I think that people supported it when my children moved in town and they had to add the portables and had to add extra teachers when people started building houses and all those fields where we had apple orchards and peach orchards and strawberry patches. So as long as we have open space, we'll have people building, and when we have people building, we'll have families move in. And unfortunately, that does mean that we will have to provide the, hopefully, the quality education and not have art on a cart as they did at one point. And I remember they even had the social workers sharing, you know, two social workers sharing, or one social worker sharing two schools and things like that. So cuts do make a difference, and I do hope you can support the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm going to read a letter, email that came in. I'm going to read it into the record. It's from Brenda Vetri. I am strongly in support of the Board of Education budget proposal. It will maintain the same quality education next year as this year. Excuse me. The increase in dollars is to accommodate the increased number of students and services that are required for that. I have lived in South Windsor since 1984. We moved here specifically because of the reputation of the schools. I was involved as a volunteer in my children's school. I am now well into my senior citizen years, and I want the same excellent education available for all children in this town. When my children were in the school system, senior citizens supported building of schools, smaller class sizes, and other school-related things for them. Now I am a senior citizen, and I'm willing to do the same. If less money may be coming from the federal government, I think that is something this council should address without impacting the performance of schools here. South Windsor was a great town to raise my children. South Windsor is a great town to raise children. Don't change that. Again, Brenda Vetri. Okay, we have two minutes before I have to start the next public hearing, so I think we'll take, we got one, you got a minute and a half. Otherwise, I'm going to have to switch public hearings back and forth.
Megan Powell, 23 Woodland Drive. So I've heard a lot of speakers this evening discussing how South Windsor schools have prepared them for a successful life. So as a product of the school system and someone that considers myself to have been successful thus far, I figured I should share my story, too. For background, after graduating from South Windsor High School, I went on to graduate college in just three years with both my bachelor's and my master's degrees. I've gone on to secure a position with a prestigious Big Four accounting firm, and I've recently become a certified public accountant within the state and dedicated the past three years to serving clients to the best of my abilities. So how did the schools in this town prepare me, you might ask? Let me tell you. South Windsor schools made me tough. After being bullied for the seven years I attended school here, you could say I was more than ready to graduate. The notion that school is supposed to be a friendly and safe place to learn is far from the truth in this town. To sit around and watch my friends get bullied and to have been on the receiving end myself...
Excuse me, Ms. Powell, just, I'm legally required to pause this for a moment, open the next public hearing and come back, so if you can keep your place. We are now going to suspend the Board of Ed public hearing and, and open the public hearing for citizen input for the general government budget for fiscal year 2526. Ms. Senneth, if you can read the public notice.
To be published in the Journal Inquirer, March 21st, 2025, legal ad, Town of South Windsor. Notice is hereby given that the South Windsor Town Council is set Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 8:30 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall, 1540 Sullivan Ave., South Windsor, Connecticut, as a time and place for a public hearing to receive citizen input on the proposed general government budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, dated at South Windsor, Connecticut, this 18th day of March 2025, attested to by Catherine Senneth, Executive Assistant.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to suspend the public hearing for the general government budget and go back to the public hearing for the Board of Education. Okay, Ms. Powell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To, again, provide context to where I was, the notion that school is supposed to be a friendly and safe place to learn is far from the truth in this town. To sit around and watch my friends get bullied and to be on the receiving end myself, we either get tough or you cave. So I got tough. Next up, South Windsor schools made me find my voice. No matter how many times students spoke up about bullying, concerns fell on deaf ears. From guidance counselors that were best friends with the bullies, to principals and assistant principals who were too busy to meet with concerned students, to bullies being rewarded with entrance into honor societies despite formal complaints being filed, school made me want nothing more than my voice to be heard, so here I am tonight. South Windsor schools made me discover my love for fiscal responsibility, after watching this town make poor decisions year over year. I think back to when this town, as part of its school plan, bonded the purchase of trashcans for 30-plus years. Anyone that knows a thing or two about finances recognizes how ridiculous that is. Finally, South Windsor schools made me learn how to teach myself and rely on myself. From disturbances in the classroom, taking away from learning time with nothing being done and no disciplinary actions being taken, to watching the irresponsible actions taken by towns' leadership continuously and negatively impacting taxpayers already struggling to keep up with the town's rising costs, you start to learn how to be resourceful and fend for yourself. So while I learned many valuable lessons during my time in our town's schools, I have to ask myself, at what cost? I might have turned out okay, but at what cost? I consider myself lucky to have had an exceptional support system to rely on outside of school, but I know many students who fell victim to the environment that I, too, was raised in during the school day. So while all of these programs look good to you all in the room, I have to ask you, at what cost? If you're blindly supporting this budget as parents, I bet your children are not on the same side of the bullying that I was. I strongly oppose this budget standing before you because I ask myself, at what cost? How can I support a budget that goes towards rewarding bad behavior and turning a blind eye on those that truly need the resources? Until the basic needs such as safety are satisfied, I cannot support the luxuries that are included in this budget. So to our duly-elected counselors this evening, I implore you, I implore you to ask yourself, at what cost? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Good evening. Steve Cordero, Nine Bird Hill Drive, neighbor across the street. Talked about the school budget. Like the follow-up of my previous person that came up. At what cost? Do you look at the budget? I would say it's increased every year. We talk about it. Am I in favor of the budget? Absolutely. But at what cost? I went through the school system back in the 80s, Pleasant Valley all the way through. When I started Pleasant Valley, my parents were immigrants, so when I started school, I couldn't read or write English. So the stuff that's offered today was not available back in 1980. So what did I do? Took upon myself to learn how to write, to read, and so forth. By the time I got TE, I was an honors student, got to high school as an honors student. And so people talk about education that it'll diminish the quality of education. It may or may not, I don't know. You know? At what cost should the school board budget be? You know? Do I think 6%, which is almost $6 million? You know? I don't know, but it's fair to ask questions, which I commend the counselors to ask questions, you know, during these tough times. You know, I agree the budget should increase, and it will increase. You know, and like was previously stated, the school board budget can never be decreased. So even to prove that $6 million, that's restart next year. So it's, again, at what cost? I agree the budget should be increased. I believe kids should get education. I got three kids in school. One went through a pop program, which is fantastic, by the way. I commend those people, those teachers. One of my kids was very tough to deal with. They were fantastic. I agree. But once again, at what cost? There's a lot of families out there who weren't here tonight who would say that they're having a really hard time. And people who are elected who volunteer their time, along with the Board of Education people who volunteer their time, to come up with an answer, at what cost? So I agree with the budget increase. At what percent? I'm not really sure. But to give a Board of Education a $4, $5 million increase over last year, I think that's a pretty good increase. Other town departments are getting almost nothing. We moved to this town because of education and safety, I believe. Full disclosure, I worked for the police department for many years, and their budget gets trimmed every year, almost to a point where they can barely function with what they have. But once again, they thrive as a unit and as a police department to give us the best safety environment for our kids, for us to live in. But once again, at what cost? So I commend the counselors for looking into the budget, just asking questions during these tough times. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward regarding the Board of Education budget? Go ahead.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Michael Silva, 166 Clinton Drive. I'll speak from my experiences. I grew up in a neighboring town, I won't name it, but it's a town that got cuts, right? It started that way. My parents immigrated here, immigrated to the US in 1980. I was born a couple of years later, started, excuse me, ESL. But in the town that I went to school in, there was always deferments, there was always a little bit of cuts here, trims there. There were kids that were left behind. Luckily, I was not one of those kids, but I was one of the ones that got into special programs. But I, for myself, don't think it should be down to statewide tests to figure out if you can get into a program to succeed. I believe every kid should have that opportunity, and the way that's done is making sure every kid in the school system as a whole can support these children, the future they need. I also didn't attend college, sorry, but I have a good career in IT, but not every kid needs that. And the way I was able to do that was through the education I got from my public school. And I moved here, I didn't grow up in South Windsor, I moved here nine years ago because of the brand-new schools. We were, I was moving here from Seattle, and I was looking at neighboring towns, but the brand-new schools were very eye-catching, and I moved here, loved my neighborhood, my principal's around the corner, it's amazing. My neighbors are all great. The houses were built in the 60s, so it's starting to age out. Everyone there is young families, right? And then my sister was living in West Haven, found out she was pregnant with twins, wanted to move up closer to us, and I told her, you need to be in South Windsor. The community is amazing, the school system is amazing. She went over asking on a house that needed a full rebuild, and she did that for the school system, for the community. And I believe in the community. I volunteer with the Parks and Rec Department, T-ball, soccer for both my kids. I work with the Cub Scouts in town as well, so I believe in this community, and I want to see it prosper going forward for everybody, so I am in support of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward?
Hi there, Matt Nettles, 109 Mountain Drive. So might as well a question for everyone here, like, when we built four brand-new elementary schools, I've lived here 15 years, 10 years before I had kids. Daria, how many, how many elections, there are votes that we have to do for that? We did four brand-new elementary schools, and what, we're not going to fund the schools? We're not going to improve the junior high, the high school? Like, what are we doing? Like, what's the point? All our home values have gone up, mine's gone up 30%. Like, I've invested for the last 15 years to pay for these schools. Let's see it through. Like, let our kids enjoy it, like, let our kids prosper. Like, what are we doing? Please, over like, what, a couple hundred dollars a year? Let's fix it, keep the schools moving, and let's plan for the future and build some new stuff, because have you guys been a TE recently? Mmm, it's ugly. I'm not even a teacher, so. That's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward at this time?
Who, I mean, wait a second.
Well, you've already spoken, Ms. Plummer. Right now, we have someone right here.
Hi, Jessica Glasser, 79 Wentworth Drive. My husband and I moved here in 2017 when we were voting to build the new elementary schools, and we had no kids, we're not rich, we're gig workers, we go out and we make money when we work. We don't have retirement, we don't have anything, we don't have parental leave, nothing. We go out and we make our money, and that was a big deal. My husband's also a Republican, and I'm a Democrat, so that's very taxing in general. But we talked about it, and we said, when we do have kids, and now we have two of them, and one will hopefully be starting school this fall, we want to invest in the youth of this town and in the youth that we're going to bring into this town at some point. And we decided to vote yes on building these schools. And I just think it would be so backwards to, like someone said before me, to not fund the schools that we already decided to build and to invest in and to put kids in. I think, you know, if my kids want to do sports, I want those to be funded. I've never played a sport in my entire life. I don't care about sports. But if that's what they want to do, I want them to be the best at it, and I want them to have the best resources. If they want to do science, or they want to be like mom and dad and do music and do theater, I want them to have those opportunities. And that's why my husband convinced me to move to this town and not move back to my hometown of Newington. And when I moved here, I realized all of my teachers from Newington that gave me such a wonderful education chose to raise kids here and move here. So I just think it's really, really important to give the schools what they need. They're not asking for anything extravagant, I don't think, in my opinion, when I was looking it over, it all seems pretty bare bones. And if we keep having hundreds and hundreds of kids coming in every couple of years, you need to pay for those kids to be here, whether they were born here or not. Everybody deserves the opportunity to have a wonderful education, and that's why we moved to this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Plummer, is there someone else before Mrs. Plummer? Because this is her second bite, so.
Look at how quickly I can come. 235 Orchard Hill Drive still. I just want you to look around this room. Look at the beauty in this room. The parents, the teachers, two hours we have been here, asking you, please, to do the right thing. Your thank you to this community is passing the school budget as presented and as asked as is. Mr. Humphrey can speak two languages, I cannot. I'm a senior reader in the school system, and I have to say, I read a book that had many Spanish words, and I presented them like a good teacher on the board ahead of time. And I want you to know those fifth graders knew most of the words, even at one half-hour a week. I was so proud of my school district. I am so proud of every single person who has come here tonight, and each of you who has taken the time to listen and understand. Diversity makes us better. This community makes us better. And we are strong, and we are proud, and we are committed, and we fully stand behind our schools, each and every one of them, and the Board of Ed's budget. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone else to speak regarding the Board of Ed during the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. At this time, we're going to close the public hearing for the Board of Ed proposed budget and take a straw poll. The straw poll is not... The straw poll is not scientific, but for all those in favor of the proposed Board of Education budget, please raise your hand. Cayman Neely, only one. How many did you get? Fifty? Four? Four? Those who are opposed, can you raise your hand a little higher? Who are against the budget? One, two, three. Four? Okay, we have a count of fifty to four. We're going to, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak regarding the proposed general government budget? Mr. Paterna, would you like to speak on the general government, on the public hearing? Yes.
Thank you. Andrew Paterna, 301 Strawberry Lane in South Windsor. I'm here to speak in support of the town budget, and it's hard to say, it would take me a couple of hours to talk about what great services we get in this town under Mr. Maniscalco's guidance, Public Works, Health Services, Human Services, the Senior Center, Parks and Rec Department. I mean, these are all top-notch programs. I've been experienced as a coach, and I always remember families from other towns coming and complimenting, "Wow, our parks look so great. Wow, our fields look so great." So, we are getting top-notch services from our, all of our town services. So, I support their, their proposed budget. I also want to give a little information about, there was some concern at the last meeting about food waste in town, and what's the long-range plan for food waste? So, I want to, food waste, so I want to give you where we are, even though we're doing something that's going to cost us some money now, and food waste is going to cost some money, because you've got to pay the company that comes to the, either the school or a town building to collect food waste, bring it to the composting site, and deliver it. But, in the long run, 45% of our garbage is food waste. And our contracts for trash removal in this town with companies like All American Waste are based on the weight of all of our trash. So, if you take 45% of the food out of our waste, the next time Mr. Maniscalco goes to negotiate a contract, our taxes are going to go down, because our trash removal will cost us less money. So, that's kind of one of those thinking outside the box, and I think it's happening right now. We've got to think long-range, but I think Mr. Maniscalco's already plugged into it. I know he's visited, a number of councilors have visited the anaerobic digesting center in Southington, and if you sign up places like Stop &amp; Shop, Engeislers, and Whole Foods, and Costco, to deliver their food waste there, even more savings for the town of South Windsor. So, we have to keep that in mind. I know it's going to cost us some money now to see how it works, that's what the pilot program's all about, but I think in the long run, we can save money in taxes. Thank you, and I support the town budget.
Thank you, Mr. Paterna. Anyone else who'd like to come forward? Mr. Zimmerman?
Yeah, Craig Zimmerman, 5A M. Auto Drive. So, I'm on the Board of Ed, and I just want to explain, I didn't talk during the previous discussion, because Mrs. Espin, I thought, did a great job representing the Board, and as Board members, we don't normally speak in public as individuals, so I chose not to, but clearly I've supported the Board budget. But I, you know, Mr. Paterna said something that I really think, people need to step back and think about what he said for a moment. He talked about the great facilities and the great programs we have in town, and I think he used the sports fields as an example. So, I just had to, had to stand up for a minute. We take a lot of things for granted. I think the town manager and his staff do a great job, but I think we're being a little bit naive if we think we can go with 0% tax increases for a number of years on the town side, a 0% increase in spending on the town side, or very minimal. And really, the only increases are for staff increases, which are extremely well-deserved, and think that those programs that we all think are great are going to continue, all right? If you have less people working on the fields, are the fields going to be as good shape for all the games and all the use? I mean, we have fantastic people, but you can only get so much done with the staff that you have. And that's just one example. I really, you know, I wasn't going to play the numbers game, got criticized, I did this before, but I'm going to just do it one more time. As you think about maybe trying to put some money back in the town side, which I would completely support, and you're looking at a program, let's say a couple of programs or a number of things, that would total to $100,000, seems like a lot of money. $100,000, it would be to me. When I worked for the state of Connecticut, my highest salary just topped $100,000, so I can, I can relate to that, it's a lot of money. But if I asked you what you think that, how does that increase the average taxpayer, somebody with a home assessed at $350,000, that $100,000 increase, when you're all done and you're almost done with the budget, and you're thinking about, should we add a couple of these things back? $100,000 means that that taxpayer who lives in a $350,000 home, a home assessed at $350,000, roughly will pay $10 a year in additional taxes, less than a dollar a month. So, when you, you know, get down to it and you're looking, and I understand it's cumulative, and I understand it's in the budget for the next year, but, you know, when you're deciding maybe not, to cut a couple of staff in this department, or not add somebody in another department, not give $30,000 or $40,000 to the senior center, which would make their, you know, eyes just get large with how much use they could get out of it, right? $30,000 or $40,000 to the senior center would be amazing. $30,000 or $40,000 would be $3 to $4 per year for that average taxpayer we're talking about, all right? I understand, you know, I majored in finance, I get it, but I really hope that you look at what the real cost is for some of the things we're not doing. Because if we come back two and three years from now, and we're still doing on the town side, kind of, I said I wasn't going to do that, kind of doing this kind of funding, it won't be the kind, it won't be the town that we want, it won't be the town that we now have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Ms. Snyder? Oh, Mr. Humphrey?
Hello, Damian Humphrey, 6 Birch Hill Drive, South Windsor, Connecticut. I wanted to come up again, because I wanted to thank Town Manager Maniscalco and his staff for the sidewalk that is being built on Birch Hill Drive. Initially, I was not in favor of the sidewalk, because I felt like there were other areas in town that were more of a priority. But, the, the company that was chosen to build the sidewalk had been exceptional. All of the neighbors, for the most part, that I've spoken to, have had really positive things to say, and it's going to increase the quality of life for me and my family, and I'm looking forward to having more trick-or-treaters this Halloween. So, thank you, and I hope that you approve the town budget and consider proposals in the future to have a real town budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Snyder, 191 Bourbon Street, South Windsor. I just wanted to say that I think the town budget is, we get so much out of the town general government, out of the budget, from the town administrators, and as Andy Paterna had mentioned before me, every aspect of the services that this town delivers, you know, and I mentioned them earlier, is top-notch. When, when you move here for the education, you have children, right? Or you're a senior and you want to play pickleball, or you want to be part of some meetings, or you need some healthcare screening, you, anything you'd want to do in this town, it's there. And the people that serve the town and the general government are just, I don't even, they're top-notch, and they consider their residents to be their customers every single day. I'm concerned about the lack of increase on the town budget. I get it, people don't ever want to pay more, but considering what we get in this town and for what we pay, I just want to be sure that we are not cutting the knees out of the town government every single year. So, you know, if you decided to reduce things and you take things away, just remember, you have close to 27,000 people in this town that are not complaining as a whole. These people are happy with their lives, they're happy with their safety with the police department, and the fire department are just top-notch, again. So, consider what everybody's getting, and consider all those people that are home, putting their children to bed, had a dinner, went to a sports practice, or had a game. Those people aren't here complaining to you. Those people aren't sending hundreds of letters saying, "Cut my taxes, cut my taxes." So, what is the whole global South Windsor, are they happy? Do they like their services? Do they want to give up trash removal? Do they want to give up bulk pickup? Do they want less programs for their kids, or for them? So, let's not underestimate what the, the general, what the town government gives us, because you don't find it in very, very many towns that meet the standards that we have. So, I support the budget, I wish it was more, to be honest with you, because I'm sure there's things that need to be done on the town side that aren't being done. And having served on the Council and on the Board of Education, I know what those things are behind the scenes, and not everybody knows what those things are. So, let's keep our town in top shape, and I support the government budget, but I wish it was more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to come up?
Lisa Copper, 1 Autumn Drive. As I said before, I've been here 50 years, almost, and I've noticed wonderful changes in the town with regard to the services that are offered. The rec department was practically non-existent when we moved here. Now, there are numerous programs for all ages of children, as well as before-school and after-school care and summer camp. The senior center, as far as I remember, was non-existent when I moved here, and now there are outstanding programs that I go to, and that offer support to seniors who otherwise might be isolated, as well as social workers who help with any activities that, or problems that they have. Also, I use the library a lot. I was just there this morning when there was a program for parents with young children. It creates a sense of community. We did not have that when I moved into town. We were basically, as a, as a mother of a young child, we were basically isolated. It was hard to find people to get together with, and now there are numerous opportunities. Obviously, our parks are outstanding, people can use them for walking, they can use them for, use them for sports, and there's all sorts of opportunities that we have. Earth Day is coming up next Saturday for people to become aware of what's at Lawrence Park. So, I would just, I support this, I support the general budget in its totality, and I think we have the wonderful services that I'd like to see continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Copper. Anyone else who'd like to come forward?
I'm going to grow tall again. Daria Plummer, 235 Orchard Hill Drive. I'm going to speak very personally. Town services are extremely important. Called the police department twice last summer, they were there. They called the ambulance, the ambulance came just as quickly. Couldn't do it without a good police department. Sadly, years ago, we had a fire. Fire department came, put a foot through our roof, but everything was safe, all was good. Thank God we have a fire department. Farmer's Market is amazing. My streets are plowed, are yours? My leaves are picked up, are yours? Of course they are. We live in South Windsor. We have a senior center that is absolutely, bar none, the best in the state of Connecticut. We have a town hall in which we have meetings, many meetings, many departments here. We have awesome park and rec, we have awesome Public Works. You just see the signage go up for, for all the Patriotic Commission things, and the strawberry fest, and all of that stuff. They put them up, they take them down, they're amazing, and they protect us. We need the town government, we need the Board of Education. We just simply need, and we can provide, and I'm asking you to consider very carefully and provide what they have asked, they have reduced, they have reduced. They're down to their bottom element, the basic element. It's time to say thank you to the town also.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward?
Hi, Steve Cordiero, 9 Birch Hill Drive. In regards to the town side budget, I commend the amount, I agree with it. My own concern is, as I noticed the room emptied out, who are in favor of the Board of Ed, because people move into town because of two things, safety and Board of Ed, but as soon as the Board of Ed part was over with, a large amount of people left, and we forget about the safety in this town, take it for granted. On the budget side of it, the last couple of years has kind of been bare minimum for public safety, for the police departments over, and I have full disclosure, I did work for the police department, now retired, but just people are aware, a lot of things that go on in this town that, you know, the police department takes care of and goes unnoticed, which is a good thing. So, I always in favor of, you know, as we streamline the town side budget, that the public safety part, you know, it's, it's not an easy job to do for them, and it's hard to recruit, hard to maintain, and so on. So, two things that I think everybody recognizes this town, I hope, is education and safety. So, I'm a proponent for the safety part, and I just wish that, you know, there could be a little increase there for them, because it's hard to maintain, and there's potential of a large group leaving soon, which is going to be a huge void, and it's just a big part of this town, is public safety. So, in regards to that, I just wish there was a little more there for them. So, other than that, in regards to sidewalks and that budget, I agree, I live on Birch Hill, it is an amazing sidewalk, I do commend people on that side of the street for shoveling it for me next year, because it's a long road. It's a long road. I do appreciate it very much, you know? But in regards to sidewalks, I didn't even realize, after all those years living here for so many years, that we built all these new schools, but we have two schools that have no sidewalks. Philip R. Smith is on Griffin Road, and that road is narrow. It never dawned on me until I went down Griffin Road and realized, there's no sidewalk here. Brand-new school, no sidewalk. Then you go to Pleasant Valley, there's no sidewalk along Hill Drive. And as part of Pleasant Valley, I mean, on Ellington Road, near Pleasant Valley by St. Margaret... Sorry, St. Francis Church, there's no sidewalk. You know, I commend the sidewalks in the town, I think it's great, but now that I look at it, it's like, how do we build schools without sidewalks? But yeah, I mean, thankfully, there's one on Birch Hill, which is not in front of the school, but we have one now. So on just that note, I'll be looking forward to where the sidewalk plans go in the future, hopefully at schools area. Other than that, I do commend and I do agree with the budget for the town side. Thank you.
Leave it alone. Leave it alone. Thank you. Anyone else to like to come forward to speak on the general government budget?
Hello? I hope you can hear me because I'm afraid to touch this microphone. My name is Denise Ricata. I'm at 18 Birch Hill Drive, once again. Great proponent of the sidewalks is I have a dog who needs to be walked, and the sidewalks are wonderful. But I'm really here to support Mr. Sullivan and the library today. I work in a library in another town, and right now, our libraries are facing some very, very big changes. We're not sure what the future is going to bring for the state library, for libraries in towns, and all over. And so I'm really want to push you all to support the library and the town budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to like to come forward at this time? Going once, twice, okay. Going to close the public hearing at this time, and we're going to take a straw poll as in the Board of Ed public hearing, the scientific polls. It's not a scientific poll, so if you're going to raise your hand if you are in favor of the general government budget. One hand. One hand. Okay, one. Twenty-six to one. Okay. Thank you for attending the public hearings, and we are going to resume our regular meeting at this time. Come on, you're going to leave the regular meeting? Moving on to item eight, adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting, Counselor Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Approval of March 17th to 2025 Town Council regular meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of March 17th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item nine, communications liaisons and officers and boards directly responsible to the council. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Water Push Control Authority meeting this past Tuesday on April 1st. They approved the connection of 186 Foster Street for Orchard Point, a 55-plus active adult community with 50 new homes, including some pickleball courts. They also set a time and place to hold a public hearing for fiscal year 2025-26 budget and the new sewer rates. The new rate proposed is going to be $4.99. Public hearing will be set at 7:00 PM of May 6th, just before the regular WPCA meeting. I also attended Parks and Recreation, which met on Wednesday, April 2nd, at 7:30 PM. They're planning on being part of a referendum this November, having their building becoming AARP compliant. All programs are going well in Parks and Rec, they're doing a great job providing activities for both old and the young. At their request and on their behalf, I requested the town manager, requested to the town manager and the Parks and Rec to have a voting member on the Capitol Project Committee. Town managers will get into that, and I'll report back on that at another time. Disc Golf, which we already heard earlier by the mayor's announcement, will be officially open on April 12th at 10:00 AM. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Bagueski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real briefly, attended the most recent Economic Development Commission meeting, and the Commission is moving forward with their plans to unveil the business registration form. They've got some handouts. They are working on actually going out business-to-business, targeting, at this point, restaurants in town. They're going to do a local lunch-and-learn when they sign up enough and to generate some additional interest in this, and they'll keep going there. They've got the website is all set up so people can either register online or the old-fashioned way, they can fill out the form and mail it in if they want. I can send everybody copies of this if they have any interest. And then just to further iterate what Commissioner Burnham said, there are a lot of projects in town going on, which we'll be concluding hopefully in the next, you know, 12 to 18 months, which will help increase our grant list, which is much needed. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for communications? Seeing none, thank you. Moving on to reports from committees, item 10, having none. Moving on to the consent agenda, 11A1, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve 11A1 as a first reading on the consent agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Moving on to 11B1, Counselor Carey.
Motion to approve 11B1 as a second reading on the consent agenda, resolution appointing Michael LeBlanc as a member of the Public Building Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Moving on to 11B2, Counselor Pendleton.
Motion to approve 11B2 through 11B4 as a second reading on the consent agenda, resolution appointing Cesar Lopez as an alternate on the Board of Assessment Appeals, resolution appointing John Stengel as a member of the Personnel Appeals Board, and resolution appointing Linda Jeskey as a member of the Economic Development Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on to 13C, second reading, none. 13D, none. 12, unfinished business, none. Budget presentations. First on the list is Andrea Cofrancesco, our Director of Human Services.
The Human Services budget starts on tab five, page 194.
Before we begin, I'd just like to thank our clerk for printing this out for us and putting it in our packet with all the tabs and the pages of each of the departments. It's very much appreciated. Thank you, Kathy.
Hi, everyone. I'm Andrea Cofrancesco, Director of Human Services, and I have Liz Landevan with me. She's our Youth and Human Services Director, and so if you have any questions, we can... Why is this doing this? Maybe we should increase the town's budget and buy a new microphone.
Don't say it.
Anyway, so I just wanted to point out before we answer your questions that the Human Services Department has multiple budgets within, includes the Adult and Services, the Human Services and Administration, Youth and Family, Sheltered Workshop, and Transportation. And overall, all of those came up $7,000. I know we were supposed to come in at zero. I came in as close to zero as possible. The $7,000 is specifically the hours for half of a year for a youth counselor. We had budgeted last year for half a year, well, the current fiscal year that we're in because she was funded for additional hours using the ARPA grant. And when that ended, we had budgeted for the extra hours in the budget for this year, and then we're asking for the other part of it for next year. Other than that, it came in at even, and we can maybe answer any questions that you have.
Counselor Carey?
Andrea, thank you very much. Nice job on your budget. There were a couple of things that were reduced, and we just... Can you hear me okay? We just wanted to understand why, you know?
Yeah.
So, two of them were grants, where last year, we gave $5,000, and this year, it's recommending $2,000.
For Mark?
Right. That's one. And the other one was for, like, battered woman.
I mean, we had to cut something because we were asked to come in at close to zero. And a lot of what we have within our budget is salaries, so we chose to kind of reduce it. Instead of eliminate it completely, we reduced it because we had to cut somewhere.
But, like, this year, prior years, have you used those grants?
We provide it to Mark and to the Interval House, and they serve South Windsor people. They do things... The reason why we actually even make those donations is to support them serving our residents that we don't provide services to. It's to assist their agency to help South Windsor people.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Pendleton?
Okay. Thank you for the presentation of your budget, and I just want to say thank you in our packet receiving the senior connection. Y'all are busy every single day and taking trips and great things happening. I love it. I might go, might go without my husband, too. We'll have to see.
Well, that would be great.
I don't know.
55 and up.
I... Yeah, I know. He can go to work, I can go have fun. Anyways, question. Do we, as you mentioned, we donate to Mark, we contribute to Mark, and we contribute to the Interval House, and what about... Help me correctly, is it Cornerstone Vernon? Do we donate there financially?
No. They typically, while they might serve some South Windsor people, like their food bank doesn't, so we don't actually donate to them.
And what about in Hartford? Because I know some of our folks have ended up being in Hartford.
We do not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions for Andrea? Thank you.
Well, I think that was a record. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay, moving on to item two, Sue Larson and Kristy Shah, registrar voters, and tab one, page number 45.
All right, for the record, my name is Sue Larson, I'm the Democratic Registrar of Voters.
I'm Kristy Shahar, I'm the Republican Registrar of Voters.
Okay, and we, you know, our budget, just so you're aware, is like 0.2% of your total town budget. So we are very, very small, and we don't have an awful lot of places to cut. So our budget is as close to a 0% increase as we possibly could.
That was a quick one. Any questions for our registrars? Counselor Carey?
So I know last year, with the new voting, you know, you guys were kind of strained beyond belief. I was here at like 1:30 in the morning or something, and you had people who had been here since 6:00 AM.
4:00 AM.
4:00 AM, okay. So does this budget, you know, give you what you need to handle the early voting and, you know, the new process?
When we put the budget together, we would have said yes. Since that time, our budget, the numbers are going up. And the reason for that is when UConn determined what kind of new tabulators we were going to get, we got 20 of what they call the DS 350s. The maintenance cost on those is about $396 a year. That's... You know, it's really not that bad. Then UConn decided to relook at the whole state after looking at the nine pilot towns, which we were one of, and decided that there were certain towns, and we fell into the category, that needed to get the DS 450. The DS 450 is a little more expensive, but on the maintenance side, went up from $396 to $4,000 a unit. So...
But it won't be here till 1:00 AM, hopefully.
Right, right. So from that aspect, the maintenance cost is going to be going up. We've been told that with the new total vote system, which is the new voter registration system for the state of Connecticut, should be online sometime around June 2nd. There may be more equipment, certain scanners that we're going to need to purchase, along with this new voting system that's coming in. So that's going to be a couple of, you know, a couple of thousand dollars of more additional costs. So we have been really good in this office about making sure we keep as best as we can to within the budget. And in years previous, when we've had primaries or referendums put into the budget, if it didn't happen, you guys got the money back at the end of the year. So we've always, always really looked very closely, which is why we're at close to a 0% increase as possible. And we'll watch, once we have to get those new costs in there. We'll watch and see what else we can shift around to make sure that we've got everything covered. You all set?
Well, I wanted to ask a follow-up. So, you know, with that news about those machines, and, you know, having done, you know, worked a little bit that day, I know it was taking forever to get things through that machine, the tabulators. I mean, I think it's been an hour to get, I don't know, 600 through or something, you just...
This new machine is a higher speed, but that's why it sits on a table versus the, you know, the machine. So it's faster, hopefully.
So, but then, do we need to make an amendment to your budget to take into consideration? Like, do you need to request that additional amount for this new tabulator that you didn't know about when you filed it?
At this point, we're not going to ask for it. If at such a time when we see that, you know, we're starting to get stretched out a little bit, we'll come back and ask for an extra $2,000, $3,000. But for right now, I think we can hold.
I didn't touch anything. I think, you know, if we don't have a primary, or we...
Yes, that'll help. Yeah, yeah.
So we, I think, to help answer some of that, we do carry a contingency in our budget, and probably if the registrars got to a point where they felt that, you know, they needed that extra funding to help with their machines, or whatever other scenario happens to occur, they would come to us. That would come to all of you, at which point you would transfer those funds to their budget to account for whatever that overage would be.
And if you really want to help us out, I know the Appropriations Committee in the state is looking at trying to give us some money towards early voting that we could use to cover some of this. So write to your state legislators and senators and say the town is... town of South Windsor really needs that little extra money, whatever you can give us. Little plug there.
Pendleton?
I know we're there to yes vote.
You also? Counselor Pendleton?
I, I think we're kind of on the same, same wavelength here. We're both looking at each other, shaking our heads, yeses, yes, together. I'm concerned. You gotta, you gotta look at, I'm con, you're concerned.
Yeah, I'm concerned, and, you know, I know Patty's in the audience. When we talk about contingencies, you know, our budget, everybody, every department did a phenomenal job, and is coming in so tight. And so, I'm a little worried that, you know, if, if, I would rather put a little bit in the budget, I, I don't want to, I'm not trying to go crazy because, you know, I'm like fiscal conservative here, but put a little bit in the budget than be in a situation where come the end of the year, instead of having a little bit extra that's flowing into the general fund, we're like out of money. That, that's my only concern. So, Patty?
I don't think we would turn down any, anything. You know, we're trying to...
I would, I would like to see a few thousand put into their account extra, and I'd like to see us write a letter from our town council to the legislator about the early voting, asking for some funding, and maybe that can make up the difference for their need, their financial need.
Yeah.
And it would be a two-for kind of thing.
Yes, absolutely.
That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
I, I don't want you guys to be in a pinch. I don't want to have to take from contingency when now is the time to say, hey, this is coming up. And over the years, the registrars have always come to us, excuse me, honestly and openly, and, and never had an over-funded budget, you know, but you've always come to us and said, if we need it, we'll come back. No, you're saying it now, so this is the time
Okay.
for us to say, let's give, like, your grand total might be, what, six thousand dollars, maybe, that?
I'm thinking three thousand dollars should cover.
Three thousand, okay. So, if we do, like, total three thousand?
Well, three, an additional three thousand.
Okay, so if we could get fifteen hundred from us, and then fifteen hundred from the state, or a thousand, something to make it work for them.
Yeah.
So they don't have to be stressed out over the election.
Oh, we'll still be stressed out over the election.
I know, but, I know, I know. I, I got you. You know, so I think that, you know...
Forty days of early voting is long, long, long.
See if you can get that cut back.
So, let us just try to help out, you know. It, it's a pretty phenomenal event, you know, the election. So, every time, every year, so, and you guys have always run a tight budget. So, I'd like to see an increase for you guys.
No, thank you.
And, and let's figure out a way to do this, to get money from the state, and then to put money, if we can get money from the state, and then that'd be less.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Balboni?
Have we still got questions?
Well, we actually don't have any more answers. We're done.
Yeah, how can we help you?
Exactly.
Mine's actually simple. I just didn't quite understand what you said. You said we have twenty machines, and there was three hundred and ninety-six dollars to maintain for the cheaper ones each, and four thousand dollars each for the new ones?
No, we, UConn gave us twenty of the, originally, because we were one of the pilot towns, and there was, were the DS three-fifties. Those are the slower ones. Now, they came back after having, you know, done the work with, you know, the nine pilot towns. They said South Windsor needed fifteen machines, fourteen of them being the DS three-fifty, and one being the DS four-fifty, which is much faster.
Oh, so just the one machine?
Just one.
Who needs four thousand dollars?
That's why, yes, yes.
The other fourteen or whatever, it's just the three or four hundred?
Still, right, right. So, that's why I'm saying that those six machines will kind of half compensate for the four thousand dollars. But then, on the other hand, we are still looking at the possible scanners also. So...
It just has a lot more working parts and...
Yeah.
Just twenty machines times four thousand real quick's eighty thousand dollars.
Now, it's fourteen times, you know, no, 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 no.
We've got the three, the three ninety-six already in there.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate you ladies and all the hard work that you do. First of all, I think we all saw it during that early voting season, especially as stuff broke down, and, you know, I see my good friend in the audience, and her running back and forth, and I was like, what are you doing? She said, ah. So, I appreciate everything that you guys do. So, just a couple of questions, just so that we're clear. So, I see the repair, maintenance for equipment is, and, and the request is for seven grand. Is that, on page forty-six, is that part of what we're discussing? Part of it, probably? Okay. And then, because then there's another line in regards to office equipment where you're not asking for any money. I just want to make sure we're not missing anything.
Yeah, the office equipment, we, that, we're...
You're not out there buying new copies, is what you're saying?
No, no, the copy machine is all through the town and stuff, so...
Okay. So, the final question would be, and only because while I applaud your efforts, at the same time, it's hectic. It's hectic enough for us running for office. And for what you guys have to go through, my question is in regards to part-time wages, what does that exactly cover? Are we offering stipends, say, for example, to people that you may need to come in and help work? I know we have volunteers in South Windsor, it's great for volunteers, yay. But if we offered stipends to people, that could perhaps keep you from being burnt out. Is that covered under these part-time wages?
We do pay people to come work the polls. But you know what you could do, especially our party, is get people to come, help us work the poll, you know, work the polls.
Okay, to, to kind of define what you're looking at?
Yes.
Part-time wages is simply Christie, myself, Mindy Lewis, and Nancy Walsh, who's our, those are our deputies. That's part-time wages. What you see under professional are, are poll workers.
Got it. Oh, yes, you do pay them. All right.
Yes, we do. We pay anywhere from minimum wage, which is around, I said sixteen thirty-five, to twenty-five dollars an hour for the head moderator. So, they're all in the range between sixteen thirty-five, seventeen dollars, eighteen dollars, twenty dollars, twenty-two dollars, and then twenty-five, depending on the positions, between, you know, ballot clerks and checkers and the head, assistant registrars, moderators. So, it's, it's all of those.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question on the new tabulators, though. I thought, are all five districts getting the new tabulators?
Yes.
And it's not just one tabulate, new tabulator for each district? It's, what's it, four or five, whatever you use?
We've got two per, per district.
Yeah.
And then, we're going to have a couple set aside that are doing just early voting. And then, we've got a couple for absentee balloting and for same-day registration.
Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure it's not just one new tabulator. I know we're being piloted.
Yes.
Fifteen total.
Okay.
Yeah.
Of the fifteen, one of them is the high-speed one that we'll probably use for absentee.
When you say high-speed, so it's even faster than the, the pilot part, pilot one?
Right, so it took us...
It took over five, six hours to, to do on the early voting, because it...
Six thousand ballots.
Six thousand ballots, and it's slow. Because I know the voters really like the new tabulators because it tells you everything. Like, you put your ballot in, and it says, thank you for voting, which knows your ballot went through nice and clean. But that takes time. And so, even when you're doing absentee ballots, it does the same thing. It says, thank you for voting. So, um...
Are you sure you don't want to do, if this is, or, yes?
Yeah, and it tells you if you've got an error on the, on your ballot, and gives you the opportunity to make the correction.
And the high-speed one's going to be...
Like fifty at a time or something?
The high-speed one, is it going to be, it's not going to be at the polling location?
No, it's going to be here.
Gotcha. Okay, just for clarity.
Just one, yeah, just one.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Pendleton?
The council would submit a letter to legislation asking for funding for the early voting. If you may have, if you may write up, Madam Mayor, that you have prepared a letter, submit, and then route back to the council first, email, or something.
Like I do with the other letter?
I'm sorry?
Like I did with the other letter for two weeks.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this you? No.
Okay. Bonnie Armstrong, Town Clerk. Tab one, page eighty-six.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Town Councilors. My name is Bonnie Armstrong. I'm the Town Clerk here in South Windsor. My office is the Records Management and Information Center for the Town. And to list just a few of our functions, we're responsible for recording and maintaining the town's land records dating back to eighteen forty-five. We maintain the town's vital records, births, deaths, and marriages. We're an integral part of the election process and work in conjunction with the registrar's voters. And we issue and/or maintain dog licenses, liquor licenses, notary appointments, claims, cemetery deeds, burial permits, and the town's ordinances. Aside from salaries, our budget is comprised mainly of advertising expenses for state-mandated legal notices, vendor fees for our land record system, and our town ordinance online system, and for printing expenses for elections and dog licensing supplies. Our budget increased around thirteen thousand dollars this year due to contractual obligations and salary increases. Thank you for your time tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you. Hello. So, I'm sorry, you, you deal with the birth and death records, too?
Correct.
With, are you going to face any increased costs or increased time costs with the, with the State Department of Public Health essentially losing funding?
We should not. No, I don't anticipate that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Nice. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
You, too. Okay. Number four, Kevin Sullivan, Library Director. Tab four, page one eighty-two.
You're in good shape. Ready for me to go? Okay. Thank you for your time tonight. The South Windsor Public Library supports the literacy, educational, and entertainment needs of the community. It's open to the public sixty-two point five hours each week over the course of all seven days, provides access to research assistance, technology instruction, public computers, study spaces, meeting rooms, a maker space, a calendar of programming, and a collection of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand physical items, and access to over a million digital items for circulation. These services are implemented by eleven full-time and twenty-one part-time staff members.
I'm sorry, eleven full-time?
Twenty-one part-time. Library services in South Windsor compare very favorably with other libraries in the state. We have a higher rate of library card holders. More items are checked out of the library per resident in South Windsor, and our librarians answer more research questions than on average than libraries in similarly sized towns, and also with, against the state as a whole. Not only do we favorably compare to other libraries in the state, we're improving upon our own performance. Visits to the library increased twenty-two percent over the past two years. Reference questions increased twenty-nine percent over the same time. And the number of public programs that the library held nearly doubled in the past year, an eighty-nine percent increase. This fiscal year follows a challenging budget, budget year for the library. Fiscal year twenty-four saw a fifty thousand dollar cut from the budget and additional fifty thousand dollars in unplanned expenditures. During that time, myself and the rest of the library staff took a hard look at every dollar that we spent, and we reevaluated what we were doing to make ends meet. And based off of the statistical performance that the library's been having, I think that the staff has done an extraordinary job focusing the resource to have the maximum impact on the residents. This current fiscal year has its own challengers. After the budget was approved in the spring, a contract was agreed upon between the town and the library's union. That contract expanded the full-time staff's hours from thirty-five hours a week to thirty-seven and a half hours a week. That puts their weekly hours more in line with the rest of full-time town staff. The extra two and a half hours added about forty thousand dollars, additional and unbudgeted expenses to this year's budget. And if we didn't have some staff vacancies, I'd likely be coming way over budget this year. And ultimately, I had to make about fourteen thousand dollars in reductions from the material budget to get us back to even for this year. So, I'm coming forward today. I'm going to ask for an increase of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars in our budget. I recognize this is a long way off from the zero percent that was requested by the council. But after our reductions last fiscal year, there's very little, little wiggle room for us to reduce costs without further reducing the quality of service that the town's become accustomed to. Cutting staff hours would mean reducing the amount of lib, hours that the library building is open to the public. Cutting materials would further damage the collection. And we just did a survey of the town for a, part of our strategic plan process, and one piece of criticism we heard over and over again was that there's been a noticeable decrease in material availability on our shelves from several years ago. So, the majority of new costs in my request come from the expansion of the full-time libraries, full-time staff's weak from thirty-five to thirty-seven. That adds fifty thousand six fifty-nine to the bottom line. And as I mentioned before, this is the first time this is appearing in the proposed budget. It's actually the second year it will have been in effect. Without this expense, the library's requested increase would be two-point-three percent, not six-point-five percent. The remainder of the increases in the budget are as follows: thirty-four ninety-two for three percent staff salary increases, twenty-two oh four, net increase to hire two vacant library assistant, three positions as librarian ones, two thousand eighty-five to shore up utility expenses where we were underfunded for our current level of service, and three thousand five hundred and forty dollars net increase for a new library website. Our current website provider is retiring and shutting down their service in October. We're getting a very good rate with them, and I haven't been able to find anything close to what we're paying right now on the market. Recurring costs for the site will be closer to two thousand dollars per year. There's just some additional startup costs there. We also reduced our budget in the area of our consortium dues and the office equipment lines totaling eight thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Thank you for your time. Happy to take any questions.
Counselor Pendleton?
Hi, thank you for coming back to us this year. Do you, do you have any openings at the library right now? Any positions that aren't filled?
Yes, we have a young adult librarian that we have, a candidate that will, we're thinking will start on the fifth of May. And then, there's an open position in adult services for program librarian. That's currently getting resumes now. That closes at the end of this week, and the hope is to have that filled for June, early June.
And so, that's been vacant for how long, and the funding was in this present budget for that?
For the programming librarian position? The individual left that position in early March, so we opened it up immediately.
And then, what about the other position?
Young adult librarian. The individual in that position retired at the end of the, at the end of December, and we opened that up in January.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Carey?
So, if you're getting feedback on the resources, you know, in the library, you know, what are your thoughts around your longer-term plan to try and bring those resources back up?
Well, we haven't really had a normal budget year in the past two years that, that I've been leading the library. We've had to dip into materials funds in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and we had to do it again this year to make ends meet in the budget. So, if we don't have extenuating circumstances, I think the, I think the materials budget is adequate, and I think that, I think that it would be nice to be able to see how far it gets us without having to use it for other purposes.
So, this year, you think you'll be able to use it for materials?
As far as I know, yes, yeah. And we, so we had to reduce it fourteen thousand dollars this year, and a little more than that last year.
Couple of quick questions, and these are not extravagant expenses, but every little bit helps.
Yeah.
Just curious, now that you made you part of the town, why do you have a separate line item for website design, and why do you pay a separate fee for your internet? Wouldn't that just be all part of the overall town program?
We pay a separate fee for our internet. It's just the way that we're currently organized. As far as becoming a town department, I've been working with Scott to slowly integrate our IT services into that with the rest of the town, and it's just going to take a little bit of time for it to happen. But our internet cost has always been a separate bill from the rest of the town.
Okay.
Same with the computer repairs. That's also on our budget right now as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Pendleton?
I know, I'm looking at you confused. I'm with you, because I was thinking the same thing. Now that you're integrated within as a town department-type thing, your staffing and stuff like that, with the services of the internet in the IT department and the rentals or the upkeep of the equipment, because I know Mr. Roberts was speaking about contracts and things like that in the very beginning, that you guys would be falling under the IT department for that. So, how is that working, and why is that not reflected in the budget, the change over where it would be saving us some money on the library side of things by integrating with the town side of things? Mr. Maniscalco?
At least in terms of internet. My understanding is libraries are eligible to use a specific type of internet that's through the state rather than just the town as a whole. My understanding is you're involved in a contract associated with that, so we've got to run that contract out to the end prior to bringing them over to the town side. So, that answers the internet portion of it.
And the equipment portion, and the IT portion, and...
We're integrating as much as we can as it goes. You know, there's a lot of contracts and everything else involved where, you know, people are... The library made agreements with certain organizations to do certain things. In terms of the website, there are certain portions of library services that are offered that are not off, that we're not able to support through the town website. They offer a lot of databases and reading materials online that we can't support through a general government website that we operate on our side, so they do need to have a different provider for doing that sort of thing.
Okay. Good now?
Thank you.
I'm good now. Okay, I'm with... Kind of the same.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, is that where Hoopla falls in?
Yeah, that is where Hoopla falls in. Hoopla, you mean the reduction in Hoopla?
Yeah, because I noticed that almost every day, we can't get this book until after midnight because we exceed our daytime things, and a lot of the books that used to be there are no longer audio, but you can only get eBooks.
Right. So, the town of South Windsor is very big in terms of usage of digital materials. We use digital materials about three times more than other towns do around the state. And we offer, digital materials come from two primary sources for us, so it's Hoopla Digital, or it's Overdrive, or Libby.
Libby, yeah, Libby.
Yeah.
It's not a great offering there, but some books.
Well, the bang for our buck as far as serving the needs of the town with the, and being fiscally responsible, Libby goes a lot further. A dollar on Libby goes much further than it goes on Hoopla. So, Hoopla, you pay per circulation, so every time we, an individual checks out an item, it costs us, it was costing us $5. The reason some of those items have disappeared is because I reduced that threshold to $2. So, some of the brand-new items were taken out of there. And the Overdrive, you purchase a license that allows you to potentially have the digital item forever, or to have it for a specific number of circulations, or to have it for a number of months before it expires on its own. But the reality of it is, I've reduced Hoopla a bit, and then I had to reduce it a little bit more as part of, to make ends meet this fiscal year. I do plan on reinstating some of it. Is that our digital circulation has continued to rise despite it being cut, and I know it's a great, it's great from the consumer side. From the library side, it just eats up our entire budget, and then we have nothing to show for it at the end of the day. We don't own any items. We don't control what's in there as far as the catalog goes.
Couldn't it become a revenue source? I would pay, I would pay for the right to get the books I want when I want, a couple bucks a month here and there.
I don't know how that would work. I mean, it's something we could talk about, but that would be...
We love revenue-generating things.
Yeah. We pride ourselves on making all of our services freely available to the entire town as part of the library.
Free is not free, though.
Free's not free. I understand. Something we can talk about.
Thank you, Kevin.
Counselor King?
Yes, and I appreciate the questions from my fellow counselors. This, and even listening to Mr. Maniscalco, so the library is seeking 23.4 increase in this line to allow for the annual fee for a website builder, host, call it 2Gs, startup consultation, site template, another 2Gs, annual web domain license. I'm looking at page 185 at the bottom, 371 maintenance contracts. The library's current web hosting company is closing in 2025, which was only $450. So, this new, and I've built my share and had my share of websites built, is this a specific website hosting everything? You're not going through GoDaddy.
No.
So, is this specific for libraries?
Yeah, the vendor that we're looking at is...
All they do is libraries?
It's specifically for library.
Okay, so it's a niche? So, what I'm getting at is it's a niche. This is what they do, this is all they do, so they're the best at it.
Yeah. It just allows us to, I'm sorry, what was your question? What's that?
I just want to make sure that this is not, it just looks like a very high amount. So, my question is going to be, okay, do they just, do we get them because they only specialize with libraries? Or do we talk to anybody else?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the vendor that we're currently looking at is the same vendor that we use for our calendar and our room working services currently. So, it's something that I'm fond of because it will integrate very well with those services, and it's also easy to use on the staff side.
Okay.
It's possible that we could have a website that we did through WordPress that, you know, might, having to hire a developer to start the whole thing up, the annual year-over-year cost might be a little bit less, but it severely limits the amount of staff members that can update and manage the library because it takes a special set of skills. This makes it a little bit more accessible for, you know, really not that much more money per year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other further questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number five, Vanessa Perry, Director of Human Resources. Tab number one, page number 53.
Good evening, everybody. Vanessa Perry, the Director of Human Resources. So, the Human Resources Department handles all personnel-related functions. Examples would be hiring, benefits, workers' compensation, random drug testing program, and things like that. I won't go through the whole list. So, our HR department mainly consists of salaries. We do have a slight increase to make up for those increases, but we did decrease in two other areas to help out a little bit. And there is a $6,000 reimbursement line item in there that you might question why it's there. Anthem does reimburse us for some of our wellness initiatives, so we accounted for that in there, but we do need to show a line item of a budget because we need to show that we're investing in wellness, so we kind of just counteracted it there. But overall, we have an increase of $1,000, $1,017. So, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Excuse me, Counselor Pendleton, I'm the one that can excuse her. But that $6,000, that reimbursement, where do I find that? On page 54.
It's act...
Is it in the...
Right on the bottom. It's like the last line item.
The recruitment and training?
Anthem Wellness Reimbursement. It's under the Recruitment and Training.
Oh, on the Munis page. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's it. Patricia Perry, Director of Finance. Tab one, page 81.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Patty Perry. I'm the Director of Finance. I am here to present the entire Finance Division budget. The Finance Division is made up of the Assessor's Office, who compiles the grand list, the Collector of Revenue's Office, who collects all taxes and sewer and user fees, and the Fine Office, Finance Office, who accounts for all the receipts, disbursements, and completes the annual audit. So, starting with the Assessor's Office first, their budget is going up just a little bit over $9,000, which is mostly for salaries, and we increase the appraisals, which we offset by decreasing printing a little bit. We are keeping some records electronically instead of printing them. I figured I would see if there's any questions on that before we move on.
Which page was the assessor's on?
The assessor starts on page 72. The increase was just over $9,000.
All right. Counselor Carey?
I just wanted to thank you. I know that we've been sending a lot of questions through Mr. Maniscalco to you, and you come back rapidly, and so we appreciate responsiveness to all our questions and the detail you provide. It's very, very helpful.
Thank you. Is that it? No? Okay, so let's move on to the Collector of Revenue. They start on page 76. That office is increasing just a little bit over $11,000, which is for salary increases, and we needed to increase the printing budget by $4,500. You can see that on page 78. On the left-hand side, sort of towards the bottom, you can look at the actuals for fiscal '24. We're almost $23,000. We'd only budgeted $17,500 for this current fiscal year, so to keep in line with where actual costs have been, we're increasing the budget. By state statute, we need to mail a bill to every taxpayer. We only mail one bill with two coupons, one for July, one for January, but we also mail delinquent notices, demand notices, we'll have tax sale printing mailers that we need to send out, so we need to increase that budget.
Any questions regarding the Collector of Revenue? No? Counselor Pendleton, you have that look on your face.
No.
Okay.
Sorry. I was trying to get to the finance office.
Okay. And moving on to the Finance Office, that starts on page 80. The increase in that office is just over $13,000, which is basically salary increases for staff. There are four staff members in the Finance Office. We did try to decrease some trainings and different kinds of office materials, but we don't really have too big of a budget to make any decreases to.
Counselor Pendleton?
Now, I have a question. I had read somewhere, and I'm looking for my note, and I don't see it in here, but for check printing, is that for our every-two-week payroll? Are we on that? And is, did that, did that happen to save us funds, monies?
So, there's, in the budget, there's a line item for check stock. So, when we cut checks to vendors, accounts payable vendors, we need to have check stock that we use, so there's a line item in there, but there is a line item for Paychecks, which is our payroll processing company, and we will save a little bit of money, but unfortunately, going biweekly won't save us exactly half. We thought we would save the weekly cost, but now you just need to divide the cost of providing the payroll service by 26 weeks instead of 52 weeks. So, it will save some funding, but it's not as much as we anticipated.
Okay. And there is a position of an, hello, I can't speak, Assistant Finance Director that has not been filled, and the reason for that, hasn't been posted, the monies are in the budget. What's going on there?
Yep, so the Assistant Finance Director's last day was Thursday.
Oh.
We held first interviews today. We're going to hold second interviews Thursday, so I don't foresee the position being open for more than a few weeks.
Great. And the funds are already in our budget, and everything else is going to work out good?
Funds are in the current budget, and funds are in the fiscal '26 budget.
And then I also run under the tax, thank you, and I also run under the tax collector, temporary employment for the tax collector. Do we still bring in folks temporarily during tax season, even though we have two folks in there?
We do bring in a temporary employee, so a few years back, we reached out to the high school. We did a little recruitment at the high school level, and we've had a graduate of South Windsor High School, he comes back. He's in college now, and he comes back to help in July and in January.
Great.
Just for the busy, you know, just a few busy weeks.
Collection time. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Every step of the way, all the increases are staff. Are these all continued staff getting increases, or is it hiring new staff?
So, all of my staff is, will be the same staff that we've had. So, it's no new positions in Finance. It's the same.
So, hiring new inexperienced people would be less expensive?
I mean, it depends. Theoretically, no. You know, if they're going to come in and do the same job that was vacated, I would say no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions?
I had one more.
One more?
So, I have Central Services as well. That starts on page 91, still in tab one. add an additional staff member. So, when we merged the Clerk of the Council position and Executive Secretary position, we ended up taking a part-time staff and making them a full-time staff. That position was added to Central Services because they do work on a lot of minutes, and they work for more than one area, so we put them in Central Services to cover the whole town. There was also increases in operating material and postage. And we have the Paychecks fees, you'll see that is actually increasing because of, if you look at the actuals in the professional, if you look at the actuals for fiscal '24, they're way higher than we're budgeted for fiscal '25, so we do need to bring those up just a little bit.
Is that the Paychecks every two weeks that I was talking about?
Counselor Pendleton?
Sorry. Was that the Paychecks every two weeks that I was talking about?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, it's increased for us instead of decreasing like we thought it would?
It's an increase in the budget. It will be a decrease, but we actually did not budget enough in the current year, so that's why we have to increase it to make our actuals.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Boganski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have we, and could we consider just EFT for payroll rather than a physical check?
So, right now, all employees are on direct deposit, and we don't print stubs for them, so we're not incurring costs for that. It's the cost to use the software.
Oh, okay, all right. So, I misunderstood. I thought there was still an actual printing and mailing cost for that. Okay, all right, never mind. I withdrew. Okay, all right, never mind. I withdraw my question.
Counselor Carey?
So, your actuals were ninety-seven thousand. You're requesting eighty-seven thousand. Is, is that enough?
It will be, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Pendleton?
Yes, and I know this isn't, I have you here for this question, but it may not be appropriate for you to answer. I'm not sure. I'm looking at the Town Council Budget Change Commentary, because it mentions audit fees. And I'm wondering, we'll get to the Town Council Budget, I get it, but audit fees I thought would fall under Finance. So, that's, that's why, why not in Finance, is my question. I don't know if the audit is a different audit, or Finance Audit, or what audit. I just saw the word audit fees, so I kind of just was questioning that.
The Town Council appoints the audit firm, so that's why it's in the Town Council's budget. It's always been there. And we had to go out for RFP for a new auditor, well, for an auditor, since their term was up, and we did have a little bit of an increase.
Good enough, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, seeing that, I think you're all set. Mr. Maniscalco, finally get to you.
All right. I'm gonna try to get through. So, we're gonna start on tab one, page seven, for the Town Council. So, the Town Council Budget is a reduction of fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. The majority of that reduction is as a result of moving the Town, the Council Clerk's position into, some of the funding into my budget, and having Ms. Senator do both jobs there for you. I think as Counselor Pendleton identified, and Patty Perry took my work away from me, she basically told you guys there is an increase in the audit fee that's included in your budget, so. I don't know if any of you have any questions about your own budget. If not, we can move on.
Move on.
Move on, all right. Next page would be forty-nine for my budget. So, my budget has an increase of twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. A large majority of, actually, all of that is related to salaries. First of all, we have the increase from taking on the responsibilities for the Council Clerk. And we also took on some, we also were able to hobble together some funds from a couple of different areas. We ended up parking them in my budget in order to hire an additional person that helps out with, in my office, part-time, as well as in the annex, part-time, answering phones, doing some other administrative tasks.
Seeing, moving on?
All right, we'll go to page eighty-nine. So, the Town Attorney's line item, we are keeping that the same this year at two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Any questions about that? Pretty straightforward. And then lastly, Boards and Commissions, page ten. I believe for the most part, we kept all the Boards and Commissions flat. So, we kept all the Boards and Commissions flat, consistent with the budget policy statement.
Counselor Balboni?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify something when you did your presentation that I thought I heard, but I'm not positive. Have you already used the two-point-five million dollars of the Tax Stabilization Fund to get to the numbers that you were showing us, or is that still available to reduce the taxes?
Correct. We did use it. So, the budget policy statement that you all passed did say, attempt to try to not use it, but use it if necessary. When looking through the actual ordinance associated with the Tax Stabilization Fund, it identifies very clearly that it's meant to be used in the event of a reduction in revenue due to State of Connecticut impacts, to which I think we all saw what happened with motor vehicles this year. And that impact was pretty significant, and we felt that we had to implement that as a result.
So, I'm just curious, the two-point-five million, did that come off the government's side, or the Board of Ed, or a little bit of everything?
Big picture.
Total, okay.
Correct.
So, it didn't, in other words, if your budget increased by eight hundred thousand, it wasn't three-point-three million, it reduced it by twenty-five, two-point-three?
No, 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 yeah.
All right, just hit me quick.
It's just the big picture, it comes off the top of the big picture.
Excellent, thank you.
Correct.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you. I just had a quick question about, you said you kept all of the Boards and Commissions flat, but the Public Building Commission is up a little bit. And then zoning and Board of Assessments is down, so just wondering why?
Right. Those, a couple small spots. Public Building Commission, they had to, we had to find somebody to take meeting minutes for them. I believe that was being done through the Board of Ed, through the Superintendent's Office. And they, since the schools are done, they're not interested in doing that work anymore. So, we needed to find somebody to do that. We needed a little extra money to be able to get that person in there to do that work. The Zoning Board of Appeals, we brought that more in line with the actual number of meetings and hours being spent.
Is that the same for Board of Assessments?
Yeah, correct.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. I'm a little slow. I'm gonna go back to the Town Council Expenditure Summary, and just looking at the items here under Professional. In two years, it's gone up thirty thousand dollars for the Professional account. And then underneath the Professional account is fees for the annual audit and the GASPY, GASPY ninety-six, or whatever that is. I wrote on it, so I didn't see it. A Courier, and then the Verizon cellphones. So, I don't know where the increase, it doesn't break it down, because it's just Professional with the grand total. And that's on page eight. Thirty thousand dollars in two years, for what increase? Do we know?
Let's look, real quick. So, those are your fees for your audit, your fees for your Courier,
Yeah.
and your fees for your cellphones.
But compared to last year, do we know?
The large majority of it's gonna be for your audit.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, because that's a lot of money. Because I think our Courier was even six thousand last year. I don't think.
Yeah, that, I don't believe has changed.
Right. Nor has the cellphones. So, it's really the Courier is like a thirty thousand dollar, or the audit is thirty thousand dollars. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Carey?
Well, just because I was on the Audit Committee, what happened, Counselor Pendleton, is when they went out for RFPs. The only people that came back with an RFP was the auditors that we currently had. And their audit cost was significantly up from the prior year. But since nobody else really wanted to bid on the municipalities, you know, we needed to have an audit done by somebody. So, it was a big jump. I forget exactly what it was, but it was maybe twenty-five or thirty thousand dollar increase. But it was, no one else wanted it. I guess people who do audits on municipalities are not as enthusiastic about doing it anymore. And so, you know, they had requested RFPs, but they really didn't get anything but one. I just thought you might.
No, thank you. But do you have any idea what we're paying the auditor?
I have it, but I don't have it with me.
Maniscalco could maybe do the math.
It's eighty-seven thousand, five hundred in the budget.
Thank you.
Correct. I do have one item I just wanted to bring up to the Council, related to the budget. I was gonna actually hold on to it, but I think it makes sense to just bring it to you guys just tonight. I am gonna ask that the Council adds an additional one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to the salary contingency line. As I think we heard tonight from a couple of people, there's a lot of retirements pending from the Police Department in particular. And those come with some pretty hefty price tags when people do retire for their years of service and the work that they did for all of us. Typically, what we've done historically is we've tried to cover a lot of those retirements in the department budgets. So, there had been the ability to try to make up those funds in different budgets. But we are, at this point, so tight with a lot of our budgets. We were gonna ask that you guys add a little bit extra to the salary contingency to make sure that we have that available. And I'm hoping I'll bring you some good news on the other side of that budget to maybe offset some of that soon, so. Stay tuned.
Well, that was my question, hearing that twelve police officers can retire today. And it takes about a year to get a police officer into position. I'm deeply concerned about our Police Department. I'm asking you, with the funding of the Police Department, increasing the staffing of the Police Department. I know their budget was presented to us, but for finances, you're coming to us now for retirement for finances. And talking about that, and we should be talking about increasing the Police Department positions, adding a new officer.
So, I believe the Chief comes to talk to you on Wednesday.
Okay.
And I'm gonna guess he's gonna do a heck of a lot better job than I could do at explaining that and discussing it.
But because of what you're saying with the retirement, that would be a monies savings with the folks that would retire to the new folks coming in, because they wouldn't make quite as much as what the retiring folks would be making, correct?
No, so what I'm saying is, when an employee works for the town over a long period of time, they're, do a payout at the, at the time when they retire. So, you get paid for your vacation and sick time based upon your union contract.
Oh, we don't have that money?
Well, we don't have that money accounted for anywhere. Typically, what we've been trying to do in previous years, we would make up that difference in the actual department budgets, because there was some funding there to be able to do it. The budgets this year, and in the current year, and in the proposed one are so tight, it's gonna become very, very difficult to continue operations of the department and make up those differences.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think you can sit down now. Moving on to thirteen B, Counselor Bogansky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution approving the Charter Revision Commission's recommended revisions to the Town Charter. Whereas pursuant to Section one zero zero four of the South Windsor Town Charter and Chapter ninety-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes, the South Windsor Charter Revision Commission has completed its review of the South Windsor Town Charter. And whereas the South Windsor Charter Revision Commission has proposed certain amendments to the South Windsor Town Charter, contained in the final report and proposed revised charter filed with the Town Clerk on April two, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the Connecticut General Statutes require the South Windsor Town Council to consider and take action on the final report and the proposed revised charter. And whereas the Town Council held a public hearing on the proposed revised charter on February three, twenty twenty-five, and conferred with the South Windsor Charter Revision Commission prior to the Commission's filing of the final report and the proposed revised charter on March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. And now therefore be it resolved, one, that the Town Council approves the proposed revised charter submitted by the Charter Revision Commission and with certain rejections by the Town Council of proposed changes and other technical revisions as attached. Two, that a referendum shall be held on the proposed revised charter on Tuesday, November four, twenty twenty-five, between the hours of six AM and eight AM at the five polling places established for the state election in South Windsor, Connecticut. Three, that the following ballot question shall appear on the voting machine of the referendum in the following form. Shall the Charter of the Town of South Windsor be amended as proposed by the South Windsor Charter Revision Commission in the April two, twenty twenty-five, proposed revised charter and is approved by the South Windsor Town Council? Yes or no? Four, that the Clerk of the Council shall cause the proposed revised charter to be published as a legal notice as set forth in the Connecticut General Statutes. Five, that the South Windsor Town Attorney shall prepare an explanatory text for the referendum on the proposed revised charter for consideration by the Town Council. Six, that the attached warning of referendum is hereby approved. Make sure that's.
Do we have a second? Okay, moving on to discussion. Attorney Correll, we have the legal notice, the warning, electors of the Town of South Windsor, where the, it says, I think, we have an amendment, amended one that says five? Just wanna make sure, because the original one said four. Correct, but I'm talking about the warning of the resolution. I just wanna make sure. We don't have to.
You don't have to read the warning.
Okay.
But the warning will be corrected to reflect five polling places.
Okay, I just wanna check on that. Okay, thank you. All right. Let's go through this. Everyone have the third version? Should be starting on page eighty-one, eighty, eighty-one, because it's double-sided. It'll be the third set, so there were three, there were two drafts, and then the third. Yeah, start with eighty. It's got the blue line in front. Lower right-hand corner. Okay. Just wanna make sure we're all in the same place. Okay, so we're gonna go section by section. So, right now, we have, there were no changes by the Commission from Sections one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, one oh four. There were no changes, so we don't have to have a vote on that. Section two oh one, Chapter two, of Officers and Elections. Section two oh one, two oh one, there were no changes. So, we're gonna move on to Section two oh two, Municipal Elections. The CRC, their final is no change. And I believe at our last couple of work sessions we had, we were in consensus of just moving forward. Okay, Section two zero three, Town Officers. There's a change here. Should we read it out, Attorney Correll, or just have everybody look at it?
You can just have everybody review it. I mean, it's stricken there. There's three changes to this section, removing references to the Board of Selectmen, removing the position of Town Treasurer and Town Clerk as elected officers. Those positions are restructured later on. As we discussed earlier, the Town Council's actions right now are to approve the revisions, reject the revisions, or you can go through and reject certain ones. So, you don't have to accept all of them in one group. You can approve it, reject it, or reject certain ones.
And if we reject it?
Counselor, Counselor Lewis?
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. And if we reject it, it goes back to the original?
Correct. If you reject a proposed revision, it stays as it currently is stated.
Any discussion on that section?
Yes.
You want to remove anything, change anything from the Commission, or you want to keep it as is? Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Looking at two oh three, and I'm reading this, the elected officers of the Town shall consist of nine members. The position and duties are by general statute, the first right of refusal of service and a tax warrant. And then in that same paragraph, it says, no political party shall nominate more than, now we're talking about the Council. It's, the Council is combined with. Okay, no, I got you, I got you. It was just confusing. The general, no political party shall nominate more than five, and no electors shall vote for more than five members of the Town Council. So, that's the part that's concerning, no electors shall vote for more than five members of the Town Council? Is that what, that's correct?
That's correct.
Each political party can put up five?
Right, each party can put up five, but we can only vote for five people? Right, each party can put up five, but we can only vote for five people when we go to vote?
Yes.
Okay, has it always been that way? Yes, thank you.
So you don't have a change with this, you're, you're good with this section? Counselor Begansky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I, yeah, I'd like to change the, I'm not sure how to word this properly, but to, to remove the striking of Town Treasurer as a, as a elected position. I'd like to keep that as an elected position.
So you wanna place back in the Town Treasurer, but keep the Town Clerk and Selectmen stricken?
Correct. Thank you.
I know, it's a, it's a mouthful. Counselor Pendleton?
Uh, yes, I'd like to keep the Town Treasurer in there for the fact that we just spent $87,000 on an audit. We're spending $87,000 on a year on an audit, on a financial audit for our town. And we have the systems in place, we have what we need here. We don't need a treasurer on top of what we're already doing, our finance office is doing. And we're paying $87,000 for someone to do that. We don't need a Town Treasurer to do that. And the description of what the Town Treasurer does is already covered by the finance office. So it's redundant. It doesn't make any sense. We also have, we're also, an Assistant Finance Director that goes over finance. It's, this is completely, completely redundant, and their recommendation is to remove the treasurer. So they've researched it, we're not the experts, I would call them the experts at this point, cause they know exactly what happens, what the position does. We don't need it, we don't need the treasurer when we're spending $87,000 on an independent audit. As I've said before, it's already being worked on, already being done, we don't need a treasurer. Eliminate another position. Eliminate the Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and the Treasurer, we don't need a treasurer.
Counselor Carey?
I think the Town Treasurer is important. You know, when you do an audit, you do it as a point in time. Okay, an audit is simply at a point in time. And while municipalities don't follow generally accepted accounting principles, they do follow municipal accounting principles, which basically say that if you're missing 2%, it's incidental, so you don't worry about it. So when we're looking at budgets of $140 million, 2% is a significant amount of money. That's, that's what an audit is trying to overall saying, your financial papers aren't in shape. That you seem to have the processes that work and that you're doing the right things. It, it's very different than what the treasurer's been doing, which is really line item reviewing information. And I understand that Charter Review Commission interviewed different people who did the treasurer job. And I guess it was done very differently depending on who the person was. But the most, the current treasurer is doing a very detailed job of, of looking at this data. And I think that it's really important. And I, I do think we need that as an elected position.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yeah, can I just ask, if, and I'm not disputing what you're saying, but if the Town Treasurer is doing this thorough job of examining the budget or whatever, finances, like where, is he reporting that information somewhere? Or, I mean, I've seen him here one time at a meeting talking about something. I've never heard him give any information to us on what's going on with the town's finances. So if he's doing all of this work, where is that, where's the work product? Like who, who's getting that information?
I think that's a great.
Counselor Carey?
Sorry, sorry. I think that's a great point. And I do think that we probably need to look at the way, who he's communicating with and how he's been communicating. We, we have been getting it in our town committee meetings. And so maybe, you know, I, I am not disagreeing with you, Counselor Fitzgerald. I think that, you know, possibly he should be doing the same type of update in your town committee meetings or coming in front of council and sharing it with everybody. I agree, and I'd like to see, you know, us change the way the communications flow.
Yeah, I mean, I would say if, if the, if that position is gonna remain an elected position and the people of this town are electing that person, that person should be providing reports to the entire town, not just a one political party. Thank you.
Counselor Balboni?
First, I absolutely agree with more on that, I would love to see.
Counselor Fitzgerald, do you agree?
What?
You agree with Counselor Fitzgerald?
Counselor Fitzgerald, sorry.
Name change.
Where was I? Yes, no, I agree with Counselor Fitzgerald. And I definitely would have loved to see Mr. Joy in here at, at least once a month would have been great. The information he does provide and unfortunately just gets to the RTC was incredibly enlightening. I understand that Patty Perry gave him just amazing cover. And I don't think that the town government portion of the finances is the issue whatsoever. The issue seemed to be getting anything at all from the Board of Ed. He was pulling teeth, he was, well, that's an exaggeration. But he was, he was not getting the information he needed, he kept running into different obstacles, this, any other thing. Like I said, I wish he could have come here and spoken to you. But he seems to be getting a lot of flack and obviously now all of a sudden we wanna cut him out of the picture altogether. So I don't know, when I see someone receiving that much flack, I have to assume they're over the target.
It would have been helpful for him to be here tonight.
Yes, the, I think the CRC, instead of eliminating him, should have maybe thought about rerating his job description. And maybe coming up with what a treasurer should be doing, but he's a free set of eyes for the town. Free, it doesn't cost anything, look through the budget, there's no fee for a treasurer. And as Counselor Carey said, the audit is just a snapshot in time. I know, I go through it four times a year on just financial information. I also have to go through insurance audits as well as many different kinds of audits where I'm at. So, yeah, it's just a snapshot, it doesn't look at everything you're doing unless something pops up as material in their quick looking, which if Counselor Carey's correct, which I believe she is, 2% of $140 million is a pretty big number to have to be, the mistake be to be reviewed. That's it.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just for the sake of not being redundant, can I hear from the committee, please, in regards to why you guys cut it out? Cause we have, obviously, we have people on the committee from both, from all sides of the aisle. So what was, what was the reasoning for that?
There are a couple of things that we discussed. Number one, I've been around long enough to know there've been 15 years of audits and we'd never had a negative audit. So what is this extra pair of eyes gonna bring us? Number two, you can't, we couldn't look at, we felt, this position based on who's there now. Cause if you go back to the last three or four treasurers, they did nothing similar to what the current person is doing. So that means somebody could be elected and not have any background in finance and be the Town Treasurer. Whoopie doo. Meanwhile, 15 years of audits, no criticisms. So I'm not sure what the extra pair of eyes is doing.
Thank you.
That was our, that was our reasoning, some of our discussion. Jan Snyder?
Um, yes, some of the other things we discussed, when we looked at the Charter, the duties in the Charter of the Treasurer, it was things like taking money to the bank, making investments for the town. And, and 60 years ago, that probably was true at the time. But we, we do have a complete, well organized, well run, tip top financial department. And, and other towns in our, kind of in our, our, our district reference group and all have the same kind of, you know, departments, financial departments that, that run all of that. So based on the fact that, to Andy's point, the treasurer's duties and to Counselor Balboni's question, is they were so far out of date. People, the treasurer doesn't take money from, that comes into the town and puts it in a bag and takes it to a bank and deposits it. They don't sign the checks anymore, all that stuff's electronic and things. So all of the trap, the traces are there. And one of our members on the, on our committee, Jessica, said, well, you know, one of the things is all of this information is available to any public, anybody who lives, any elector or any resident of South Windsor. So if I wanna know how much we paid XYZ Company in the past two years, I can obtain all that information. You know, I, I can get it on a data file, I can get it on a thumb drive, and I can see all that and check all that. So all the information is readily available upon any resident's request. So, and, and another point that was brought up, which I thought was really good too, is, you know, we may believe we have a good treasurer now, which is terrific. But we didn't feel that we wanted to put any requirements on, on a candidate for running for treasurer. Because what if somebody runs for treasurer that has absolutely no financial background? Like me, I have no financial background other than to spend money. So that, that's my key point in life, is just spending money. So I don't keep track of it, I just spend it. So for me to run for treasurer, I may get elected, I, I don't have any of the financial background. But we didn't think it was fair to put down, to change those, those specifications on the treasurer in the, in the charter stating that they had to have a financial background or accounting background or anything like that. So all of the things that pointed where the town was 60, 70 years ago to what it is today really kind of outdated the treasurer and, and kind of, you know, forced it out. And, and based on the fact too, that a lot of times political parties are having hard times getting people to run for office. That's just another position that they have to, to run and get. And they may have somebody that just can win a popularity contest, but has no knowledge of, of any background. So that was, those are kind of the background thoughts, just so you can noodle them around.
Thanks. Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you, well, apparently there is a popularity contest, no one is attacking the current treasurer. However, you are supporting the current treasurer because as you said, looking at the treasurer now, this is a charter for the future, it's not for the, it's not for now, it's for the future. It's for our whole town, for the, this person may not be around as a treasurer in the future. And Counselor Carey, you mentioned looking at our treasurer now, and, you know, no. You can't look at the person in the position, I'm not attacking the person in the position. It's the position that doesn't meet the needs of our government anymore, that needs to be eliminated, as stated here clearly. And what, it gets picked up, I understand the audit, and then what gets picked up by the finance department, the finance department is already doing this. And so there is no clear definition, except in the charter, which by the way, the current treasurer has overstepped his bounds with his duties by asking, and I don't know, is he the treasurer for the Board of Ed, Mr. Maniscalco?
He's the treasurer for the town.
For the town, for everything? Okay, so, so one of the things that I understand that was happening in F, he had to file FOIs to get information from the Board of Ed, but I, I don't even wanna get into that. What concerns me even more is that we have an elected person, which is a treasurer for the town. And he is showing preference by going to your RTC meeting and reporting government information and not sharing it at a DTC meeting or right here at this lectern? That's concerning to me, that's very concerning to me. Especially when you say we support the treasurer that's in position right now. So, you know, that's, whatever you wanna call it, you call it, okay? I think it's, I think it's very, very unfortunate that you have privileged information that we do not have. I think that's very unfair and very unfortunate, and the citizens don't get that information either. So overstepping the bounds within the treasurer's realm right now, absolutely. The person that's sitting in position, I'm not going after the preser- person, I'm going after the position because the position has no duties, no roles, we have a finance department for that now. So it needs to be eliminated, I'm, I'm following the CRC's recommendation.
Madam Mayor, can I just add one thought? I've been around long enough to be a member of the town council, an observer here in the audience. Let's go back to around 2010, 2009. I have never seen any town council ask the treasurer to give a report to this town council because they had valuable information that this council needed. If you need financial information, you have the Director of Finance come, you have the Town Manager come. Never, not any council has ever asked the Town Treasurer for any report. So 60 years ago, as Janice Snyder mentioned, yeah, that was relevant, somebody had to take the money to the bank. It's obsolete now.
Counselor Balboni?
Couple things, so having qualifications, as Mrs. Snyder said, I think that would be the responsibility of the town committees to make sure they put someone up who is qualified to do such a job, who has enough of a financial background to actually look at stuff and know what they're looking at and why. Also, as to Mrs. Snyder said, that all the information that he did get is completely available online, therefore, anybody can go on there and look at it, so I don't think he's overstepping anything. What he's trying to get to is the stuff that he's not getting to. That is where the issue is. And I think that any treasurer in the future, in the past, or anything else, should have been able to look at this and been able to give a more detailed report of some sort as to where our tax dollars are being spent. I've said it before multiple times, the, the Board of Ed budget is very, hmm, what's the word I wanna use? General, not as specific as it could be, as beautiful as this government budget is that breaks things down line by line. I absolutely love the government budget, not how much you're spending, but I do like how it's set up. If the town, if the Board of Ed could set the exact same thing up, it would be great, they don't. They, to my understanding, they could have an invoice to Staples for $200,000. And when you wanna know what that invoice says, no clue. And no one knows where to look and they won't show you, even through FOIA. So I mean, that, that's all very, you wanna hear concerning, that's concerning to me, very concerning to me. And as to what Mr. Paterna says, that the last 15 years, we've had perfect audits for 15 years or so. How many perfect audits did Enron have before they didn't? Anybody know?
Counselor King?
Thank you. Two things, and I've said this before, and you and the Deputy Mayor reminds me of that. We asked individuals to do a job, they did it, they got the input from the town. And they put it in front of us. We have three options, if I heard correctly, A, B, and C. I'm not doing this tonight where we're gonna go back and forth over feelings. Second, if I remember correctly, Counselor Carey, one of the things that you said, you didn't ask Patricia any questions. You said, "Thank you very much, you do an awesome job, whenever I ask questions, you give me the answers." Has something changed that, from a treasurer's standpoint, that you couldn't ask her the same questions? Or even you, Mr. Counselor Balboni? Where you could ask Patricia the same questions and say, "You're paid to find out that information for the town as a director?" No, I didn't suggest that, what I am saying is that she could get the same information. Yes or no? You don't have a problem with her, so why don't we just ask her? If we need the financial information, isn't our position Director of Finance? If we needed to get the information, isn't it?
You're gonna speak, you should have your mic on.
Isn't, isn't that, we can, if we need to, we can make it a part of or whatever? Or no, are you suggesting that the person that was elected, that all they did was get the information from the Board of Ed? No. I'm, I'm just saying that if we have a Director of Finance.
I'd be fine with that if the Director of Finance was the Director of Finance for the town and the Board of Ed. And actually, that would reduce the Board of Ed's budget by getting rid of the person that handles the finances for the Board of Ed too. Good thought, I like it.
No, I don't, well, that's what I'm saying, I don't have a problem with it. At the end of the day, we call in the Board of Ed for whatever they need to do in regards to their budget or their monies or whatever, if we need to, we can. But we can call anybody, we're about to get the state rep and the. We're about to get the state rep and the senator in here. We can ask anybody to come. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not part of that, or, again, I know of Mr. Joy, I wouldn't know if he walked in right now, because he'd never reported anything to us. So, whose fault is that? I don't know. But I will say, if you guys were getting the information, at a minimum, you should have had Mr. Joy come up in here. So, that's partly our fault, because now you're suggesting that this individual had all this information, and they did such a phenomenal job, but nobody knows it. And so, I can only go off of what we know, which is every time we ask Patricia, or whomever else, excuse me, Ms. Perry, whomever else, to get that information, unless I'm just misunderstanding what everybody's supposed to be doing for our town. That's just my two cents, but at the end of the day, we have three options. So, we can vote on it, and if we do, we do, if we don't, we don't, and then we just move on, and then let the town vote at the referendum.
Counselor Pendleton?
I just have a question. Do the Board of Education elected members on the body get a financial explanation like we do for you? You, Mr. Maniscalco, as far as the budget is concerned? We get a printout from you every Monday on our budget breakdown. Do you know if the Board of Education members get that?
I don't know how the Board of Ed reports their finances to the, or how the staff at the board level reports to the Board of Ed. I don't.
But they certainly could ask, is it Chris?
Sure.
Chris Chmerka?
They would be within their statutory authority to ask the staff for, you know, reports on finances and things.
So, they could keep track of their own finances over there, because we have no control. We can get all the information from the Board of Ed that we want, but we have no control of their finances. Once they get their monies from us, they do what they need to do. We can't say to them, "Stop overspending in that account, and spend more on this account." So, it doesn't be who must to even ask the Board of Ed, until their budget comes out at the end of the year, correct? And the one that isn't impacted by that, is the Board of Ed members themselves, and they can speak to. We have no control over that. Once we give them the money, they do what they need to do. So, it doesn't even matter if we get information from them or not. If you want to do that, then go over to the Board of Ed and run for the Board of Ed, and you get all the information you want. I'm just saying. Because their budget is their budget, once we give it to them, but I'm sure it's freedom of information, it's that stack that was there at our meeting, that whole budget line item, you want a copy of that? I'm betting you could get one. I'm betting. But I'm just saying, it's none of our business. We give the money to them, they spend it wisely, they have to answer it to the Board of Ed, and then at the end of the year, that's where the budget comes in. If you want the budget changed to a different line item type budget, then ask the Board of Ed. But we can't tell them what to do with their funds. So, I don't understand why the treasurer would even be bothering gathering information from the Board of Ed, when he has no say-so over their budget. It doesn't make any, it doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't have to do with budgeting. It has to just do with knowledge, that's all.
Whose knowledge to benefit whom?
To the treasurer, to figure out what's going on in the town, that's all.
But do we not get that information?
And I am agreeing that we should have had him in here, I would say, once a month.
But shouldn't we get that information at budget time?
Absolutely, you should, absolutely. Maybe that would help you decide whether or not that we should give the Board of Ed the extra 1.5 million, or whatever that you want to give them. I mean, it's up to you, but I don't know.
Well, and my point being...
I would like to keep a treasurer. I would like to use a free set of eyes, of an elected official, to keep an eye on what's going on in the town. That's...
But I think the problem is, is with the Board of Ed, and the Board of Ed controls their own finances, and that's a thorn in somebody's side, and that's something that the treasurer's trying to break through, which I don't think he has the authority to do, because that's their finances. And we find out, we can't, they look at it with their eyes, and they decide what to do with the presented budget from Dr. Carter. They come to a conclusion, and that's what the board, that's what they're elected to do. And that's what they're asking support for, is their budget right now. So, they've looked through it, through all their eyeballs, just like we look through our government piece. We don't control the Board of Ed, we don't have authority over that.
We only have authority over their budget, that's it.
And that's reducing it, or increasing it, what have you, but they have accepted their budget as is and presented it.
They always do.
So, the point is, if you want more detailed information, which I have no idea why it would benefit you, because, I don't know, but in the treasurer, why would it benefit the treasurer? I don't know. I don't know. Because once the money's presented to them, then they have, they explained it to us, they show us in the budget. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. May I just point out, and I'm going to turn it over to Jan Snyder, but, you know, the council appointed us, we've been working for 16 months, we had five public hearings, 16 open meetings, we had a special meeting with council members, we were all invited to confer with the Charter Revision Commission before we issued our final report. We interviewed a lot of people. So, I think, we're going to suggest to you, rather than debate each item, Jan?
Yeah. We're just, and it's totally up to you, we're just saying, after we've, like, we know almost the whole charter by heart by now, which is pretty sad. We have PTSD after that 16-month storm. But I guess, for a matter of process, recommendation from us would be, if you're going, you're going through each section, which is great, and if there's something in there that, I mean, you would call a vote for each section, and I think we talked about that, too.
Yes.
To make it official, that you had...
We're going to vote on each section that's contentious.
Right. So, you know, my, our recommendation would be to just take each one, as you're doing, and call the vote. And if it passes, it passes, and if it doesn't, then you would take it out. You know, you would strike it from what our report would be. Does that sound something that's feasible, Attorney Corella?
No, it's not, because we just spent 20 minutes on one item.
You're debating the item.
We're happy to answer any questions, yeah. But this is what our findings were, and after all of this time, you know what I'm saying? Or don't, or don't accept it, you know, whatever. But if you're calling votes, you take, Madam Mayor, you're taking the official action on each one, and some of them, actually many of them, don't have any changes to them.
Correct.
You know, so you don't even have to address those. And I think you have the red, the red line, you have one with the red line in it? Yeah, okay, I know, I forgot mine, so I'm using this. Yeah, either accept it or not, and that way, you know...
Yeah, and I want to propose the question the right way, so we know how we're voting.
So, do, like, for Section 207, do we, or 205, do we accept?
We're on 203.
Okay, 203. Yeah, I know, I'm using my phone, because I can't see. Yeah, on 205, call the vote on it, and if there is a second, then the discussion quits.
I plan on doing that.
No, I'm just saying, it's just a suggestion, you can do whatever you can.
That's how we're, that's, the town attorney and I spoke, that we're going to go section by section, and vote on each section as...
So that it's an official for the record?
Correct.
For history as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, if you want to get really scared, want to ask Stephen Cordero about a question, what's XYZ? He said, "Oh, that's Section 208." He knows the charter by heart, that's scary.
Okay, Section 203. Either yes or no on accepting the Charter Revision Commission's changes for Section 203. Recommendations, all those in favor of accepting the recommendations of the Charter Revision Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Roll call, please. Right?
Counselor Buganski? Counselor Lewis? Counselor Balboni? Counselor Carey?
Nay.
Mayor Del Nicky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea?
Yes.
Counselor King? Counselor Fitzgerald? Counselor Pendleton? Counselor Balboni?
Section 203, yes or no, accepting the recommendations of the Charter Revision Commission?
So, I have to accept, taking the town treasurer out, and go with the five and four, vote so far?
We skipped over you. So, are you a yes or a no?
Okay, we have five yeses, four nos.
Section 204. It appears... Removing three members of the board to select them again, the treasurer, and five members, I think it's just a carryover, so we accept those recommendations? So, Section 204, accept the recommendations of the Charter Revision Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Counselor Buganski? Counselor Lewis? Counselor Balboni? Counselor Carey?
No.
Mayor Del Nicky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Syracusea?
Yes.
Counselor King? Counselor Fitzgerald? Counselor Pendleton? Six yeses, three nos.
Okay, and, and when we make a motion to extend the meeting past the 11 o'clock, got two minutes. You have a second? We're extending the meeting?
Point of clarification, and not, if, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, point of clarification?
Sure, go ahead.
And not, if we do not extend the meeting, if I remember, we have 15 days or something, we would have to call a special meeting if we don't.
We have it on the agenda for Wednesday.
Okay.
After the budget presentations of the Police Department and the others.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that clarification. You know we need it, thank you.
So, withdraw the motion to extend the meeting, so... It's 11 o'clock? Motion failed, we had no second. So, we have a, meeting's over, right? Motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.